I am calling to order this hearing. This is a public hearing of the committee, the whole of the council of the District of Columbia. I'm Thel Mendelson, Chair of the Council and Chair of the Committee, the whole. Today is Wednesday, March 26, 2025. The time is 2:18 in the afternoon, and we are having this hearing in Room 412 of the John A. Wilson Building. This hearing is being recorded and is available for the public to view on the council's website, www.dc councel.gov. The subject of this hearing is Bill 26-62 entitled Board of Trustees Training Amendment Act of 2025. This legislation was introduced last council period, I think in the November, December, by Councilmember Henderson and several other council members, and reintroduced this January, January 17th, by Councilmember Henderson, joined by Councilmembers Nadeau, Louis George, Bonds, and Fruman. Bill 26-62 aims to require the Public Charter School Board, in collaboration with the Office of the State Superintendent of Education, to provide a no-cost training program for newly-elected or appointed members of a public charter schools Board of Trustees. Governance lapses, particularly in financial management, have jeopardized the stability of charter schools in the district, leading to closures that disrupt students' education. On August 20th of last year, the Board of Eagle Academy announced its decision to surrender the school's charter effective immediately. This abrupt closure displaced 362 students and left employees without a school just one week before the academic year was to begin. Such disruptions not only displace students from their school communities, but also hinder academic progress; they affect or impact well-being; and they enrode, erode, public trust in both schools and the government. They also create uncertainty about the ability of schools to provide consistent, high-quality education. The incident with Eagle Academy has heightened concerns regarding financial oversight and board training within the charter school sector. This hearing seeks comments on Bill 26-62, as well as to assess the need for enhanced training programs for charter school board members to strengthen governance and ensure greater financial accountability. What I just read is from the hearing notice. It focuses on or stresses the importance with regard to finances, but there are other ways that the boards are important to the operation of a public charter school. And so, ensuring that there's adequate understanding and expertise on the part of board members is important if the system is to function well. The record for this hearing will close in two weeks. That is, it will close at 5:00 PM on Wednesday, April 9th, 2025. We have, the way we've organized today's hearing, we're going to hear from three witnesses in the first panel, we call it the expert witness list, and then we'll be hearing from members of the public, and I believe there are 14 individuals. Following that, we will hear from both the Executive Director of the Public Charter School Board and the Acting State Superintendent of the Office of the State Superintendent of Education. So let me call the first three witnesses, Carrie Irvin, Senior Advisor at Bellwether and former CEO and co-founder of Education Board Partners, if you would come forward, Marjorie Jaeger, is she here or is she going to be online? And Ariel Johnson, who's Executive Director of the D.C. Charter School Alliance. So let's go in the order I called. So Ms. Irvin, you want to go first?
Can you hear me? Yes. Thank you so much for having me. I appreciate this opportunity to testify. My name is Carrie Irvin. I have been working with D.C. Charter School Boards for 15 years. After co-founding the only national nonprofit focused on improving charter school boards in service of improving student achievement, I now lead the governance practice at Bellwether, a nonprofit education organization. I support board members and school leaders here in D.C. and nationwide with governance advice, board training, and recruiting. I always say I'm probably not that fun to sit next to at a dinner party because boards are what I talk about all the time. So thank you for this opportunity to talk about them here. To maximize the impact of this important legislation, I recommend that DCPCSB and OSI commit to developing a common, shared framework for effective charter board training. Along with key stakeholders, including my colleagues at the D.C. Charter Alliance, Ed Forward DC, and others, I look forward to and would welcome the opportunity to help all board members have access to excellent training so that all D.C. students have access to excellent schools. I believe, after 15 years in this work, that if we dramatically strengthen charter school governance, we will see a corresponding increase in school quality, school sustainability, and student achievement. The autonomy that charter schools have in this city can lead to better student outcomes and greater school sustainability if schools are held accountable. While only DCPCSB has the authority, of course, to renew, review, and revoke charters, it is up to the Board of each charter LEA to hold their school accountable for fulfilling the promises in the charter in between those renewals. For this to work, boards have to work. And there is reason to be concerned that boards may not be exercising effective oversight. This is obvious when a school in trouble is thrust into the spotlight, and as this council points out, lack of financial oversight leads to school instability and harms students, educators, and communities. Concerns about oversight are also evident from the most recent data on student academic achievement. Across both DCPS and charters, students in this city who live in low-income families are struggling. Ninety-two percent of students in low-income families do not meet math expectations for their grade. Eighty-two percent cannot read and write at grade level. All of us in this room know that children who cannot read, write, and do math will struggle to thrive. Research shows that in hospitals, nonprofit hospitals that have boards, hospitals with more effective boards have lower patient mortality rates. Because what happens in the hospital boardroom directly affects what happens in the exam room and the operating room. My long experience working with boards has taught me that this is just as true for charter schools. What happens in the charter school boardroom directly impacts what happens in the classroom. After these 15 years of working with boards, I can assure you that most board members genuinely don't understand all aspects of their role. They often lack the context and experience they need to exercise both academic oversight and financial oversight, and to safeguard financial sustainability of the school. Yes, board members need training. They need support. They need tools. They need help. In my experience working across the country, mandating board training unfortunately doesn't ensure that that training will actually help boards govern better, and I do think we have a lot of examples of this around the country. What often happens when training is required and there are no parameters around the quality of that training is that a cottage industry of governance experts, or people who claim to be such, rises up to secure a piece of that market. So here in D.C., where we have an opportunity to learn the lessons from what's happened in other states and cities that have mandated training, I strongly urge that charter board training in D.C. be provided only by people who have deep experience with charter school governance, who center their training on improving academic outcomes for all students in the city, and who teach boards that accountability is their job. Thank you for the opportunity to share my perspective and for your attention to improving charter school governance. Boards matter for students, and I look forward today and in the weeks to come to answering any questions you may have and to working with all of you and my colleagues here in the room on this incredibly important issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Irvin. Marjorie Jaeger?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm sorry to have to join you virtually today. I would prefer to be in person, but I have some children on spring break, so thank you for your patience. Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the D.C. Council. My name is Marjorie Jaeger, and I'm pleased to be testifying today on the Board of Trustees Training Amendment Act of 2025. I'm appearing today in my personal capacity and not on behalf of any organization. I'm testifying primarily about my experiences as a board member of a public charter school in Chicago, Illinois, Acero Public Charter Schools. Through my board experience at Acero, I have participated in board training required by the state of Illinois, and will offer reflections on that training and how it may inform thinking about training here in D.C. Under Illinois law, all public charter school board members are required to take four hours of training during their initial year of board service, and two hours of training in every subsequent year. The required training is provided or certified by the statewide Charter School Membership Association, in this case, the Illinois Network of Charter Schools, INCS. The purpose of the law is to ensure that board members have sufficient familiarity with the board's roles and responsibilities, including financial oversight and accountability, evaluation of school leaders and school performance, compliance with the Open Meetings Act, and education and employment law. INCF offers free live trainings on a variety of topics, including the Open Meetings Act, budgeting and financial forecasting, effective enrollment strategies, and maximizing board committees. They also offer online trainings in fiscal oversight, growing boards effectively, performance management, closing opportunity gaps, and maximizing board accountability. Finally, they have identified seven approved external high-quality trainers, including another expert panelist, my colleague Carrie Irvin of Bellwether who just spoke, to provide customized training to boards that may have unique needs. And again, to the point that she made, these are quality-vetted providers. Through INCS, I have received very helpful trainings as a board member. Those that I have found most useful have been around the board in act- Those that I have found most useful have been around the board in the role of the board in academic performance accountability, as well as the role of the board in financial management. Board members come to boards with varied skills and experiences, and these trainings can help provide an important foundation for providing strong and productive oversight. Even for board members who sit on other nonprofit boards, the specifics of charter school governance have unique requirements that are best supported through tailored, high-quality training. It's very important that the trainings are both relevant, engaging, and high-quality and easily accessible to board members who are all volunteers. Many board members are balancing busy careers, families, and other personal obligations. So training must be structured in a way that does not burden, the burden does not deter potential board members from volunteering for this very important role. Ideally, there's also a menu of potential options for training so that board members can select training that is the most relevant to their specific needs and/or the role they play on the board. A person who works in finance, for example, is unlikely to need in-depth training on budgets, but may be more likely to benefit from a training on school academic accountability systems. However, someone serving in a budget and finance committee role may be more likely to benefit from training on charter financial management. I'm very glad the council is exploring this important issue and can work collaboratively with the Public Charter School Board, O S I, the D C Charter School Alliance, public charter school leaders, and others to implement a high-quality program that supports board members of public charter schools. I appreciate the opportunity to testify today, and I'm glad to answer any questions as well.
Thank you, Ms. Jaeger. Ariel Johnson.
Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the committee. My name is Ariel Johnson, and I am the Executive Director of the D C Charter School Alliance. I am pleased to be here today to discuss how we can partner with P C S B to support the more than seven hundred public charter school board members, who are dedicated volunteers and at least half of whom live in the district. Charter school boards play a pivotal role in supporting both the schools they oversee and their chief executive officers. Their responsibilities encompass strategic planning, financial oversight, academic accountability, and leadership development. Effective boards ensure that schools meet their mission, remain financially sustainable, and operate in compliance with local and federal regulations. I want to express my support for this bill's intent to standardize the training provided to board members and ensure that each person has competencies in governance, personnel management, fiscal oversight, and operations. As the council considers this legislation, I offer a few suggestions that will make the implementation both effective and practical. During my nearly fifteen years advocating for public charter schools across this country, I have had the opportunity to work with a number of public charter school boards, ranging from single sites to smaller and large networks. While I have a somewhat different expertise than others on this panel, though I respect dearly, as a practicing attorney, I've conducted a number of trainings on the role of a strong board, the Open Meetings Act, state, federal regulatory, and statutory requirements, as well as authorizer compliance. In two thousand eighteen, I had the opportunity to draft legislation requiring both board training to strengthen financial and academic oversight for the nearly one hundred and fifty-four public charter schools across the state of Illinois. That is the program that Margie Jaeger was just speaking about. Those who completed the requirements were high-performing, were also eligible for longer renewal terms. This training passed through the General Assembly in Illinois and ensured flexibility for completion, options for board members to work asynchronously, and the ability for multiple accredited providers to account for capacity challenges. In order to implement this legislation, we looked at a variety of research, including a study analyzing Massachusetts charter schools that found that donor presence on boards correlated with improved financial performance, higher student achievement, and highlighting the importance of strategic board composition. While not perfect, over time, through authorizer and association tracking, we saw a significant increase in the number of board members who utilized the offered trainings and engaged in stronger, more compliant board meetings. Here in the district, training does happen across the charter sector. For example, of the L E As surveyed, almost eighty percent offer some type of board training. These trainings cover a wide array of topics such as succession planning, financial oversight, and effective governance. While many L E As conduct trainings internally, over forty percent also engage external partners and experts to provide training. While strong governance is essential to the success of public charter schools, maintaining a comprehensive board is not without challenges. C E Os are tasked with finding individuals with the right mix of expertise, commitment, and passion for education. These candidates must be willing to invest their time in meetings, training, and engaging in school oversight while filling gaps in financial, legal, educational, and governance expertise. Given the student populations the district charters serve, L E A leaders also work to ensure a diverse representation, ensuring that boards reflect the demographics of the students they serve. However, strong boards and C E Os overcome these challenges by creating boards with clear roles and responsibilities, open communication, and regular evaluations. These boards tend to have stronger academic outcomes and longevity. We've often seen boards aid seasoned and new C E Os by offering resources and toolkits designed to address the challenges of their role. The Charter School Growth Fund's New C E O Strong Start Kit, for example, provides tactical tools and insights from experienced charter C E Os to assist new leaders in the initial phase. Several D C leaders have availed themselves of this toolkit with board support. While we support this legislation, we hope the council will considering the following supports. Training must be flexible to accommodate board members' professional and personal obligations. We strongly recommend including asynchronous online modules that allow board members to complete training in a timely manner. Additionally, multiple training providers should be available to ensure capacity and quality. Board members do not need training in classroom instruction, but they must have a clear understanding of school performance metrics, P C S B's accountability framework, and compliance requirements for both nonprofit organizations and schools. P C S B should tailor training based on board members' experience and school needs. New board members should receive comprehensive initial training, while annual refresher training should be streamlined to avoid redundancy. Finally, we have consistently seen that when P C S B and O S I collaborate with school leaders when developing or refining processes, there are positive outcomes. We recommend replicating that success by creating an advisory group of school leaders that can inform and train, inform the training content, and help ensure the material is relevant and practical. School leaders are well-positioned to provide insight into the unique needs of different schools, whether large, multi-campus networks, small, or single site. In closing, the public charter school community supports efforts to strengthen training requirements for board members. These refinements will help make legislation more effective while maintaining autonomy and the strength of the D C charter sector. Thank you for your time. I'm happy to answer questions.
Ten minute clock. I just have a couple of questions, I think. Thank you, each of you, for your statements. I kind of want to get more, a little bit more specific as to what kind of training we're talking about. So there was some discussion of finances, but I think it's more than that. Can each of you just speak to what kind of training we're talking about, servants?
Sure, thank you. I would say a few things. Number one, all board members in D C do need to have training on D C, the context, the educational landscape, how charter schools are funded, how they are held accountable, who makes decisions. This is a complicated city for education. And to serve on the board of a public school in this city, I think all board members need to understand trained by the leaders of our ecosystem what it means to educate students here in the District of Columbia. Number two, I think that there are three main areas of governance training that boards need. Academics, finances, and operations. In each of those areas, we need to train board members on what excellence looks like, how, what oversight looks like of academics, financial sustainability, and operational soundness. I really agree strongly with my colleague Ariel and others in this room. It is not the job of board members to decide what curriculum to use, which teachers to hire, how many minutes of math instruction per day. It is the board member's job to know what decisions are being made and whether those decisions are working, to use academic examples. Same with finances. It's not enough for board members to look at a balance sheet. Margie talked about how people who serve on boards who have finance experience might not need training in finances. And my experience actually being, understanding the finances of a public school is very different than understanding the finances of other kinds of organizations that many board members have experience with in the private sector. So I think all board members need to be trained on both monitoring current financial performance, proving a budget every year, making sure that that budget is allocated towards student success. If a budget is balanced and revenues and expenses are in accordance with projections, but students are not demonstrating academic achievement, then the resources might not be allocated in the best way. So strategic financial oversight is as important as sort of technical financial oversight. In addition, financial oversight has to include the long-term financial sustainability. I do see a lot of boards that are very focused on looking at those monthly or quarterly financials, but you have, board members have to pick their head up and understand what the long-term sustainability is, given enrollment trends, changes in funding that are happening right now. In terms of operations, it's a tricky area to train board members because we want to see boards make sure that the school has a full set of policies. But again, we don't want to see board members overstepping into how those policies play out. We don't want to see board members getting dragged into personnel decisions. But we do see in the city that some of the challenges that crop up, in addition to the academic and financial issues we've talked about, there are operational issues that come up stemming from a variety of things having to do with not enough policies in place, not being implemented well, et cetera. And board members do need to pay attention to that. Finally, I do want to just emphasize something that Ariel said. It is the job of a board, one of the most important jobs, to make sure that they have a great leader in place running that school. And that means supporting the leader in all kinds of ways. It means doing a really thoughtful, professional evaluation of that leader to provide recognition for success and constructive, actionable feedback to help that leader get better in their job. It is the job of a board to replace a leader when necessary, when there's leader turnover and C E O succession, as Ariel said. And I worry that in the charter sector in general, we, over the years, we've, our sector nationally, as well as in D C, has sort of set up a dynamic where the leader makes the decisions and the board kind of ratifies. And I'd like to see a more of a partnership approach to leadership, that the board holds the charter, hires the leader, and is responsible for, again, both supporting and holding that leader accountable.
Ariel?
Yeah, so I think you asked specifically about finance, financial.
No, I said, what kind of, what kind of training? So not just finance.
So I agree, academics, operations, and finance are the three big ones. I want to focus on finance because I know that this has come up quite a bit, although I know there are a variety of things that boards can do. I think that when we talk about who board members are, we have to remember that these are regular people who are trying to do good work, right? They want to join a good nonprofit board and give some expertise and some help, but may not have all of the understanding of what a traditional charter public school is supposed to do or how they're supposed to operate. Most don't understand that they are the charter holder. So I think about finance in particular, and then I'll touch on the other two, the other two issues. Just explaining what the U P S F F is, like that in itself is very complicated. And explaining what that means and how money trickles down and what quarterly payments look like, what it means to enter into, your two biggest costs are always going to be your personnel and where your building is located. It's your rent. It is the building that you own. What does that look like? Do you have enough cash on hand? What do your reserves look like? Are you building towards that? These are all questions we have to be asking and making sure that we're following up on regularly. And not in an attempt to thwart or undercut the C E O, but to make sure there's a partnership and a continual conversation that we don't get into a situation where we might have to hire personnel or pull back, and now there's a financial issue. So those are some of the things around the financial trainings that we've seen work. And when boards really understand, and not just the finance person, when the broader board understands how all the pieces work together, you can kind of sense when there's an issue coming down the pipeline and be able to account for that. In terms of academics, we have a new accountability framework in this city right now. It is incredibly important that folks understand how Aspire is going to affect their school and what that's going to look like long term. That has to be very specific training, and that really can only happen through P C S B. They, I mean, other folks can do that training, but they know that intimately and very well. And to make sure that board members understand that, and again, we're not talking about giving board members training on classroom techniques or academic, how to teach in the classroom. It is purely on helping them understand what they need to do to achieve academic success under this new framework with this board. And then, again, operations, similarly, I agree with Carrie, that's a harder thing to teach. But for the most part, if we can get strong partnership between the C E O and a board to understand why operational compliance is important, there's always opportunity for back and forth there for folks to learn how to like, what the structure of a charter school should look like long term, not just in the year that you're talking about having that training, but like over the course of many years. And that's the thing I think we need to be focusing on, is looking not just at the, you know, the current year, but what are you trying to do in two, three, four years? Like, what are your outcomes? And looking at operations in that way.
Ms. Jaeger?
Thank you. Appreciate the question. I think to speak to the financial piece, and Carrie and Ariel have both touched on this, but it's important to understand how schools are funded, right, at the L E A level, and then how that funding is located, allocated down at the school level, where those funds come from, how great they are, what factors drive them, what fluctuations could be expected year to year, et cetera. I think it's also really important, and Carrie touched on this, to understand the long-term projections, right? Because schools need to be engaged in long-term budget forecasting and not just a year-to-year annual budget. And I think it's also important to know, what are the key metrics, right? What should folks on the board be looking for? What is the charter authorizer holding schools accountable for? Are there particular metrics that the charter authorizer is looking at? How many days cash on hand is appropriate, for example, right? If schools have financing for facilities, are there debt service ratios to be aware of? This stuff gets a little complicated, right? And helping folks understand what some of those key questions they should be asking are, what should they be discussing in every board meeting and understanding? And again, what are they going to be accountable for to a charter authorizer? And what might go in a financial report or put them on some kind of risk status for finances with their authorizer, I think are really important to understand. In overall, understanding the financial health of the L E A, and then Carrie and Ariel also talked about this, but the allocation of resources and how those resources are then being allocated, of course, to support student academic performance. On the academic side, I think folks touched on this too, but like, what are the data points that are used, right? How are we measuring performance? What metrics does a charter authorizer use? What metrics are part of state and district or federal accountability systems? What assessments are used? When and how is data available, right? How is that disaggregated by subgroup? There's a lot of pieces of academic accountability that are really important for folks to know. And folks who come in with an education background may have some of that baseline understanding. But as both Ariel and Carrie said, some folks are coming in who are, you know, work in a totally different industry. And so really helping understand what those data points are, what they mean, what the metrics are, and how to understand and interpret them from a governance and oversight perspective is very important.
I'm going to add one thing, because I don't think I heard this. And that is what the role or power is of the board? I don't think I heard that mentioned, but I've just seen, not in the context of charter schools, but elsewhere, that boards often don't understand what their power or authority is, that when they get a financial statement that has twenty rows of numbers for a twenty, not a twenty, a ten billion dollar operation, maybe they have the authority to, maybe they should ask for more detailed information. Any of you disagree with that?
No, and I think that's because in a traditional, certainly a board in a nonprofit, even though nonprofit I run, my board is my boss, but it's different than a charter school. The charter board is the holder of the charter, and we don't talk about that enough. So that absolutely has to be, when we say in the initial training, a comprehensive board training for those who are new, that needs to be the first thing we talk about, like, you are, you are the holder of this. You are in a relationship with the P C S B and with the authorizer. So we absolutely agree.
Yeah, I totally agree with that. I had just written down the same thing. We all in this room, in this city, we all have to agree on the role of the board. And as I alluded to earlier, I do think, it is my opinion that the charter school sector, funders, charter support organizations, really invested in C E Os, the founders of schools, these sort of visionary entrepreneurs, forgetting that the board, again, is not sort of a nice-to-have over here to rubber stamp things and raise some money and make cause. The board holds the charter. That's where the public has accountability. Holds, that's where accountability lives for the quality of that school. And the person who runs a school is expect, I mean, the job is huge to run a school. And the benefits of having board, one of the main reasons, in addition to accountability, that I love working with boards is the, when the idea of, when I was a C E O, the idea of having a board full of people who solve problems in different ways, have different lived experience, have a lot of different professional expertise to help me solve really hard problems, made me a better C E O. And what boards that are well-composed, to Ariel's point earlier, and very engaged, can contribute expertise, time, energy, thought, partnership to help school leaders make better decisions. So I think this issue of, and I do have a set of recommendations that I'll submit and share with you all afterwards in terms of how we might maximize the potential of this legislation. And it starts with all of us agreeing on a common definition of what is the role of a board? How do we help everyone in the city, board members and also school leaders, understand that the board holds the charter? They are actually responsible. They are actually responsible, but from a governance seat. The leader who they hire and who reports to the board is responsible from a management seat. What does that look like in practice? How do we agree on a set of, how do we get to more clarity on what the role of the board is? What boards do, what boards don't do, and how to define healthy governance? I think we have to do that as a city before we can define effective board training. Those go hand in hand.
So I think I was saying something slightly different. With, Ken, I'm thinking in the context of Eagle Academy, that I suspected the board thought that they were getting information, but didn't realize that they could ask for more. So getting financial training, yes, that we hope would educate them as to what they ought to know. But that's not quite the same as understanding that they can demand that information from the, the CEO or chief executive. I'm over my time. Councilmember Henderson, do you have questions?
Yes, thank you, Chairman, and apologies for being late. I'm also upstairs. I'm, I'm running another hearing right now on long-term care. So I just popped out. I do appreciate the committee of the whole holding a hearing on this bill, which, you know, came out of certainly what happened with Eagle Academy, but also my own personal experience. When I, when we were doing the hearing on Eagle and having conversations with board members, it was very clear to me that for some of the board members, that they felt that they didn't have the ability to ask questions. They didn't feel like they had the ability to press, but was rather there just to sort of rubber stamp, if you will. And I began to have this sort of the question around, what does onboarding look like for charter boards in general? When I joined the board of a university, there was onboarding for two days that went over everything from finances to legal to what does state law look like specifically as it relates to, you know, higher education in the university? And we didn't see anything about that on the books here in DC, particularly with regard to charters, which was a little, you know, obviously there are certain LEAs who do this work on their own, but it's very clear from what happened with Eagle that perhaps there needs to be a standard that doesn't exist. One of the things that I, we tried to do, or the approach that we tried to take in this particular legislation, was not to be too prescriptive in terms of what needed to be covered, to allow for flexibility. So while, yes, there are some baseline things in terms of the public charter school board needing to cover, certainly there are other pieces that I would imagine LEAs would want their board members to know about, you know, the founding of the school, the history of the school. The, I think, Ms. Johnson, you sort of spoke about, right, the academic pieces might be different from LEA to LEA. You know, at a Washington Latin, for instance, you know, their grounding is a little bit different than what might is a grounding for DCI, which is a language-based, a language immersion, and just trying to bring that in. I didn't view this as, and I hope the public doesn't view this as something that is punitive in nature. I do view this as something that would, I feel like, both strengthening the knowledge base of those who are serving in volunteer capacities on these nonprofit boards, but also the overall oversight of what's happening in the charter sector. Because oftentimes when we receive a complaint from a family, knowing, you know, what the, the process of elimination is in terms of where you go first, we often are referring individuals, did you speak to the school leadership? If you didn't get what you wanted there, did you talk to the board? And so we want to make sure that the board is well-aware of their rights, roles, and responsibilities to be able to not only respond to the financial things that come up, but also the governance pieces. And yes, there are some times that particular cases with regard to personnel or discipline or some other sort of family issue might make it to the board. And I want the board to feel empowered and also to know what their particular roles are here. My understanding from the research is that several other states like New Jersey and Nevada have already taken meaningful steps to talk about improving charter school governance through mandating training for board members. Florida, for instance, requires training within 90 days of the charter approval to talk about public records law, state regulations in terms of finances and operations, best practices, et cetera. At the end of the day, I feel like DC has had charter schools for a very long time. And I feel like this is low-hanging fruit and something that I feel like can help improve us going forward. I did have one question that I wanted to offer to this panel. All great friends, hi everyone, haven't seen some of you in a while. But the question I had is whether or not you feel like this is something that is better, you know, approached from LEA to LEA, or if there should be some sort of centralized training that takes place where LEAs are then able to augment based on their own background criteria, et cetera.
Hi, Councilmember Henderson, good to see you. Thank you for everything you just said, and thank you for introducing legislation. If I could, I want to just add one thing. I agree with everything you said, and I appreciate your perspective. I agree about that board members oftentimes don't feel they can ask or are supposed to, or even allowed to ask questions. I want to just add one thing to that because I think it's important. A lot of board members that I work with, they don't, they, they recognize what a hard job it is. They understand that their school leader and the teachers in the school are working as hard as they can. And I, I work with a lot of board members who don't want to push back. They don't want to push hard. They look at the data, they see the data, and even boards that do understand, find it hard to exercise accountability in such a challenging situation. And that, I think, is a problem that we have to address head-on in this training, that, yes, your school leader can be working incredibly hard. Yes, the teachers in the school are incredibly motivated, enthusiastic, and yet, this is the data. So tying back to your question about what the role of the board is, all of us here in this room who, who are working day in, day out to help improve the quality of, of schools and school choices for families need to help boards understand that that is, it is in fact supportive to ask those hard questions and take action when they see, to Margie's point earlier, if you see that the cash on hand number is alarmingly low, boards need to take action when, when they see the academic data. So in answer to your specific question, I would answer, yes, and. I do think we need centralized training in the city. I think it's a, it's, I actually think it's more efficient for board member time as well as for sort of ecosystem time. And we get a consistent message out to the 700 board members in the city when we can provide in a centralized way training about the DC landscape, the DC environment, changes that happen in the DC environment, and, and that my colleagues here and who will speak later today can provide in that kind of training context. And again, I think that we do need to train on a common approach to, this is the role of the board, everyone is trained on this. I do think we need kind of a common charter school board dashboard in the city to have a set of key metrics that every LEA board does need to be looking at. And for sure, LEAs need to then, if you will, customize governance training, add to that what that, what the history of that LEA, the specific leadership situation, specific situation with the, so I think that that is. I wanted to also comment, thank you for bringing up onboarding. I always say board onboarding is like back-to-school night. Everybody's paying the most attention they're ever going to pay at that time. And in my experience, board members, and again, to Ariel's point, board members need tactical, not theoretical, help. They need practical, not philosophical help. And so we offer a lot of templates and tools on, here's good onboarding, here's all the information. All of it has to be customized for each LEA, but it's hard for every board to have to reinvent the governance wheel. And by training on governance practices, processes, and structures, that's where a lot of the rubber hits the road. And in sort of the same, we all have the same intent, as Ariel said. But helping board members know what it looks like to implement that.
But let me ask this question, and I could kick it to Ms. Johnson and Ms. Jaeger, is, you know, I always feel this like interesting tension in terms of the public charter school board because, you know, they're, they're technically the quasi-government agency, they're also the authorizer. So is the PCSB the appropriate place as the authorizer to also be providing the board training?
I think PCSB is the appropriate place to, to ensure that the training is happening. There are, like Carrie, highly qualified folks around this country who do this work and can do it well. I think it would be difficult for the authorizer to provide this training and ensure everyone's doing it, just like a capacity issue. They have a lot on their plate. When there are people who do this full-time, all the time, that's all they do. And in terms of your question for standardizing, we talked about, we, we believe a standard, like, give people the modules to be able to go in, get the practical information they need. But you can't see who else in this room right now, but even the schools represented in this room, we've got large LEA, small, medium, medium-sized networks, and small, single sites represented right now. We have to be able to ensure that there is flexibility for those different, those different types of schools to have what they need to supplement where necessary. And we've talked about this earlier, every board has different experiences and expertise levels on their board. You might have four people who are attorneys and four people who are financial advisors on another board. And so what you might need is a little bit different. But the basic standard of like, this is how we govern in this city, this is what it means to be a, 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 a public charter school in this city, and this is what the district looks like, and this is what council allows for, that stuff, it can be standardized. But again, that could also be done through, like, let PCSB hold it, but there are folks who can definitely provide this and take some of the burden off of them.
Okay, Margie?
Yeah, no, I, I concur that there's a part that needs to be standardized and a part that needs to be customized. And I think that in other states, and you referenced some of this in your comments and also in the bill text, but that in other states, there's sometimes a set of vetted providers, right, that are sort of screened for quality. I will just note that Carrie is one of those experts who appears on some lists because of her obvious expertise in this area. But that can be helpful, right? So we don't have, as was referenced earlier in the hearing, sort of a cottage industry of potentially shady providers that comes, right? But there is a high-quality vetted set of folks who have deep experience and expertise. Other states have done some of this vetting. We can again, look to those for a shortcut, right, at least begin that. But I agree on some basic, just financial principles, including DC and how DC schools are funded, right? As well as academics and understanding, you know, Aussie accountability, aspire accountability, et cetera, I think that can be standardized. I do sit on a charter board here as well, right? And was very happy to get really strong onboarding. And to your point, there's things that are unique. History, mission, values, curriculum, right? Like what the school is doing well and where the school has challenges are going to be school-specific. And so I do think LEAs can and should augment the training that board members receive. But I do think there are some fundamentals that should be universal. And to the chairman's point earlier, certainly understanding board rights, roles, and responsibilities, in addition to the content around academics and finance, seems key and should be standard in my mind.
Yeah. I, I will say, and I know that I'm over time, you know, Ms. Johnson, to your point about the various levels of experience, in particular on a board, I'm also of the belief that nobody is like above a memo or a refresher, right? Even members of, you read the memo, and we know that when you didn't read the memo because of the comments that you make. And even if in your expertise, this could be, this is different. Education law is different. Education finance is a little bit different. And well, you know, what do they say? DC is unique, unique, unique. And so learning that particular context is important as well. But I appreciate you all being here. And again, thank you, Chairman, for holding a hearing on this bill, and hopefully we're able to move it forward. I do need to go back to chairing the hearing that I'm chairing.
Thank you, Councilmember Henderson. You had no other questions at this time, because I'll let you go a little longer if you need.
No, sir, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. I had a couple more questions, maybe more than two. Are there states that we should be looking to, looking to for model language?
Good question. And I, one of my recommendations that I can submit in writing is that I would love to see us as an ecosystem do a little bit of research to get a really good answer to your question. I think that there's, there are, at best count, about 12 states that mandate training. There's a remarkable lack of data on who provides training, is it good, does it actually result in better governance? So I think it would be great for us to take a moment and commission a little bit of research on what legislation does look like, what is mandated. It varies widely in terms of what is mandated in different states. And then I would like us to look at lessons learned, talk to board members in other states, as well as LEA leaders and ecosystem leaders. I do also want to note that two of the states that, in my experience, two of the states that invest the most in charter school board training and improving that training every year are Massachusetts and Louisiana. And actually, in neither state is training required, to the best of my knowledge. It is, it is, the authorizer and the State Charter Association have combined to make a lot of training available to encourage and incentivize that training. But last time I looked, that it wasn't mandated. Then you have states like Illinois, which we've heard a lot about, where there's a mandate with a lot of quality control. And then there's a lot of states where there's, they're either just mandating a certain topic like ethics or compliance. I can think of several examples of that where the requirement is more, is more narrow. Ariel, you might know more than I do about this.
Yeah, in preparation for this conversation, I actually sent a note around to all my peers. There are 46 states across, across the country, while in Puerto Rico and DC, that have charter laws. Less than a third of them have board training requirements. Where we do see some of the strongest requirements are where the partnerships happen between the state board of education, the authorizer, and the association. And so I think the work that we're doing here is going to be probably on the forefront of what, of what other states should be doing. I agree. Obviously, I'm a fan of the work of Illinois, so that's part of that work. We did a lot of research looking at Massachusetts and, and other similarly situated blue cities and blue states. But frankly, there is not a ton of data around what, around who is, who is doing those trainings. Start, talked, spoken to folks in New York, spoken to folks in Connecticut, while they have laws on the books, my counterparts there would say that they have not been as effective. So what we're doing here is already more effective than what folks who have charter laws with just as much longevity. They also aren't doing that in the way that we're thinking about it.
One quick addition about Massachusetts, the authorizer in Massachusetts has a lot of requirements for boards. So they do exactly what, what Ariel just said. The authorizer in Massachusetts holds their LEAs accountable for a number of, they'll check to make sure you have a CEO evaluation plan, a CEO succession plan was just added. That authorizer will look at evidence of good governance. That then cascades down to, through that partnership with the association, to getting training to boards, for boards, on meeting those authorizer requirements. So I really agree that PCSB has an incredibly important role to play in making sure that all LEAs in the city understand that good governance is as much a part of getting to have a charter and keep that charter as having a facility and having, you know, great teaching. It is a fundamental, central element of strong charter schools. I happen to think that the authorizer should not actually be the one delivering the training for, I think it leads boards to believe that if they just go to the training, then they're, then they're governing well and should get reauthorized. And I think that has led in the past here in DC to some confusion on, on boards. But I really strongly agree that PCSB has an incredibly important leadership role to play here in holding LEAs accountable when they're first authorizing and then renewing, reviewing and renewing those charters.
Ms. Jaeger, do you have anything you want to add? The question was about other states we should look at?
Yeah, no, I shared the perspective of Illinois, which I would encourage you, and I didn't even know how deeply Ariel was involved in that, so kudos to her. But I think my colleagues have stronger national perspective.
So Ms. Irvin, are you volunteering, you're going to do some, I'll call it landscape survey and get back to us?
I would be delighted to, yes, thank you.
And how often should members of boards get a refresher?
Well, we said annual. I don't know, Carrie might have a different perspective on that.
Annual's great. I think annual would be great. I just do want to agree with you, though, that providing a way to be as flexible as possible in when board members get trained and how. So mandating a cadence but building in flexibility. I will say, there is something really fantastic about calling, about having in-person trainings. Because there's a side benefit, which is we, we have, we do that twice a year. We, we have an in-person, and my colleague Ariel will be speaking at one next week, that you're all invited to come and observe if you want. Bringing board members together in person, which is very stressful, these are volunteers, they have jobs, it's during the week, it's during the workday, it's a really hard thing to do. But it ends up building, helping build a community of practice for board members in the city. And invariably, people who do come tell us that they are so glad they came in person, they met other people on other boards, they got to ask questions, get some peer support, they have people to reach out to. And it makes them feel like they're part of something bigger. Because for people who don't work in education, when they go back to their day jobs, no one else is talking about education. So I do think a mix of in-person and asynchronous is great. But yeah, annual would be great, I think.
Give me a second. Anything else any of you want to add, Ms. Jaeger? I'm going to you first since you're virtual.
Thank you so much, and thank you for including me in the conversation virtually. No, I think we've covered it. I'll just quickly weigh in that I do think annual makes sense and would renew the point on flexibility. Like, I appreciate the opportunity to attend live in-person trainings, and for schedule reasons, sometimes that's not possible. So I think trying to provide people a mix of options, it makes most sense, given everyone's volunteer role. But I appreciate the opportunity to participate in the conversation today.
Thank you. Anything else from you all? So Ms. Irvin, you volunteered, you're going to get back with some survey of other. So Ms. Irvin, you volunteered, you're gonna get back with some survey of other jurisdictions?
Absolutely.
And, uh, I think you were gonna give more detail on, uh, training as well.
Yeah, I'm excited. Thank you so much. And thank you all and for everyone in this room who I know cares a lot about boards. I really appreciate the attention to this often overlooked topic. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you each of you. So you all are excused. I'm gonna turn now to the, uh, rest of the witnesses. Uh, John Glover, Chief of External Affairs at Friendship Public Charter School. Rachel Kimboko, Executive Director of DC Wildflower Public Charter School. Russ Williams, CEO of Center City Public Charter School. Kristen, Kristen Yocum, Executive Director of Operations at Paul Public Charter School. Laura Maestas, CEO of DC Prep. Justin Lessig, who is Executive Director at Sojourner Truth Public Charter School. Emily Hedin, who is Executive Director at Breakthrough Montessori Public Charter School. Natika Talani, who's trustee at Capital City Charter School. Just a sec. All right, we'll stop there. Mr. Glover, you're first.
Thank you very much. Uh, Chairman Mendelson, Councilmember Henderson and members of the committee of the whole. My name is John Glover and I am the Chief of External Affairs for Friendship Public Charter School. I am also a Ward Five resident, the dad of two daughters who attended charter school and a charter school board member. Friendship has demonstrated enduring financial health and strong academic performance in DC for over 25 years. This is a function of many things, but it is certainly built upon the strong foundation established by consistent, high-quality governance. The Friendship Board of Trustees has an average tenure of over 16 years on charter school and nonprofit boards and is deeply committed to our mission. Because of their tenure with Friendship and other boards, as a group, they are experts in charter school oversight, understanding our mission and ensuring that resources and actions align with the vision for friendship. We agree with Councilmember Henderson that effective governance leads to higher student achievement, better LEA performance, stronger financials and greater confidence in the charter sector. We support the policy of requiring concept, uh, comprehensive training for newly elected charter school board members. After all, boards hold the LEA's charter. They have fiduciary responsibility for public funds and they are ultimately responsible for ensuring that children are receiving a high-quality education. We do however, question whether their, her repeated PCSB trainings of tenured board members would actually further the intended outcomes of this legislation or whether it would instead dampen board member enthusiasm for board service by applying the same requirements for all LEAs, whether their governance is generally judged as good or not. In particular, we believe required refresher training is best used by the PCSB as a warning and a condition. Thus, if we were to suggest the strongest change to the proposed legislation that we believe best amplifies Councilmember Henderson's and this body's intent to improve charter school governance practices, it would be to continue to mandate training for new board members within 90 or even 180 days of election. But to treat repeated trainings as follows, empowering the PCSB to mandate repeated comprehensive board trainings for those LEAs with demonstrated weakness in governance practices or who are not in compliance with the applicable laws and regulations. Another change would be to consider requiring the PCSB to take three additional steps. One, to develop and share training modules whenever there are relevant changes to federal and district law and regulation. Two, to recreate its governance handbook that we believe was last available to LEAs in 2010 and which we submitted with our testimony. And three, to make recorded board training materials and sessions available year round for individual board members who may be looking for additional support or resources. Finally, we applaud Councilmember Henderson's deep care for all children and her leadership in ensuring that governance practices are not the reason for school instability and failure. With 68 charter LEAs, this legislation could help ensure that all board members start with a solid foundation to understanding their role. We respectfully propose our amendments because we believe the legislation could go even further to ensure that the subset of charters who are most vulnerable because of governance practices get more of what they need. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Glover. Uh, Rachel Kimboko, I leave it online.
I'm actually here. I don't know if I'm elevated.
Yeah.
Okay, great, perfect. Uh, good afternoon, council members and staff of the committee on the whole. Uh, my name is Rochelle Kimboko. I'm the founding executive director of DC Wildflower Public Charter School with facilities in Ward Seven and Eight. I'm also a Ward Five resident and have lived and worked and lived and worked in Ward, um, Eight for many years after I moved to DC. I'm wholeheartedly in support of the Board of Trustees Training Amendment Act of 2025 and its intention to create no-cost training for newly elected or appointed members of a public charter school's board of trustees. As part of the DC Wildflowers founding team, I want to acknowledge the service of current and past board members. Many of the 13 currently serving were early advisors on the charter application and are now in their sixth year of volunteering to support our vision. Each trustee brings a unique combination of personal professional expertise to our work. As part of our onboarding process, we introduce them to the Wildflower philosophy and ways of working. And then through monthly meetings and retreats, the staff ensure that our presentations include training on the processes, deliverables and other relevant information. Trustees need to execute their fiduciary responsibilities around budget, academic performance and school culture. I hope that the pro board, uh, proposed board training as envisioned in this legislation will make the onboarding of these essential volunteers easier. We would recommend that the bill focus on training on governance-related competencies and academic accountability systems rather than general classroom instruction. We welcome robust training that prepares our tra, uh, trustees to understand the key elements of their governance accountability, interpret financial reports and financial measures, review student achievement data in a way that preserves anonymity, understand the aspire process and the specific framework we are part of, and understand the components of the DC school report card. I believe that consulting school, uh, leaders will be critical in developing high-quality training programs that meet the needs of our schools and their volunteer board members. PCSB and other agencies should be expected to consult and collaborate with us throughout development of new processes and content to ensure that board training is practical and relevant. I would also hope that training will be differentiated to account for the competencies needed for varying school sizes, for example, and with new board members receiving more comprehensive initial training versus more streamlined annual and or refresher training for continuing members. Um, to the extent that it's possible, training should be flexible to accommodate volunteer schedules, perhaps even including some asynchronous online training modules to make completion easier and more timely. And finally, I hope that PCSB will have the flexibility to leverage other organizations with the nonprofit governance expertise to develop this training. Being able to engage multiple training partners will allow them to reach the scale needed for a smooth and timely implementation. Thank you for your consideration.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Kimboko. Uh, Russ Williams.
Hello, Chairman Mendelson, council members and council staff. My name is Russ Williams. I'm with Center City Public Charter Schools. Nonprofit charter school boards play a critical role in ensuring a charter school's success and that their development is essential for sustainability and effectiveness of the organization. At Center City, our well-developed board provides guidance, expertise and support to our mission. I share some of our approaches here today to highlight for the council that legislating better board training should not be necessary if schools follow governance best practices. The development of our board members and their working through committees are a couple of the key factors that contribute to our success. So our member development, nonprofit boards need to prioritize the development of their members to ensure that they have the skills and knowledge to govern effectively. This at our schools achieved primarily through well-designed orientation and trainings. New members should receive a thorough orientation that covers the organization, mission, values and goals. Regular training opportunities for existing members can also enhance their understanding of the responsibilities, including academic oversight, financial oversight, strategic planning and more. We have a section at every board meeting called Board Education, unless we have like something big around a project that we're talking about that we try to incorporate in all of our board meetings. So again, board education. Had a board member when I was at the Apple Tree who used to excoriate us for always talking about backwards-looking things. We aim to be forward-looking and work on educating board members about the things that were coming. So it was like a mix and then doing, and I'll get to the other point about where we do the backward-looking work. And so I agree with the points about ongoing education for board members. But I believe that, um, and some centralized offering of training, I think is a good thing. But generally, boards that are run well should be able to help develop and take care of their own. Uh, board committees is where the work at our school is done. It's an essential part of governance and their development is vital for efficient board operations. Working in smaller focused groups, committees can tackle specialized tasks more effectively. Uh, we have a clear purpose and role for each of our committees. Each of a charter aligned with the nonprofit's mission and priorities. Our academic committee regularly reviews the student dashboard that has been developed in coordination with members of that committee. And it has been utilized both by our board and then the head of our academic committee who helped develop it has presented on our dashboard, academic dashboard at the National Charter Schools and other events because of the, what's considered the quality of the information. And we develop that iteratively with our academic committee, back and forth, giving feedback. What about this? What about that? Trying to make sure we're highlighting the most important metrics the school should be focused on and the board should be focused on. Um, in our committee, each of our committees has a strong chairperson who can organize the regular meetings, establish clear committee goals aligned with the organization's goals, ensure that tasks are completed in a timely manner. In our committees, every one of our board meetings will see that we have on our agenda is a committee report out where the committee heads are put up to the full board, the activities of the committee and take questions. And I'm, in closing, one helpful resource that I recommend to the council and to all nonprofit and charter boards is the Trustee Handbook by Mary DeKuyper. It was written, while it was written for independent schools. It has principles on effectiveness and ethical operations that are relevant to any nonprofit board, including charter schools. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Williams. Uh, Kristen Yocum?
Thank you. My name is Kristen Yocum and I'm the Executive Director of Operations at Paul Public Charter School in Ward Four. We serve over 750 amazing students in grades five through 12. And I appreciate the chance to speak with you today about the Board of Trustees Training Amendment Act of two, of 2025. Thank you for hosting this hearing. Strong, well-trained charter school boards are essential to keeping our schools stable, financially sound and focused on what really matters, our students. At Paul, we support the goal of this bill, but we believe there are a few steps to take to ensure that it equips boards to act in the best interest of their students. Let's focus on what board members really need to know. Right now, the bill says board members should be trained in instruction and academic programs. That's important, but pretty broad. A school board member's role is to hold schools accountable for academic results, not oversee lesson plans. Specifically, the bill should direct that the training focus on academic accountability, how board members can effectively use tools like Aspire and the DC School Report Card to monitor success. If we're gonna do it, let's do it right. PCSB and OSI should have the ability to partner with organizations that specialize in nonprofit governance to help develop this training. Running a charter school board is different from running a charter school. And we tr, we need trainers who understand governance, finance and accountability from a board member's perspective at a deep level. Let's make it work for volunteers. Our board members are dedicated volunteers with busy lives. They want to serve their schools well, but they need training that is efficient and to the point, covering what they truly need to know without unnecessary fluff and in ways that can easily be integrated into our school-specific training. That's something that's flexible, recognizing that the government need, governance needs of a small school are different from those of a large network. And accessible, training must be online and asynchronous so board members can complete training when it fits into their schedules. Let's help school boards support school leaders. At Paul PCS and across the city, we've seen how much smoother things go when PCSB and other agencies collaborate with school leaders before rolling out new policies. Developing this training should be no different. The bill should explicitly require input from school leaders to make sure that the training is practical, relevant and actually helpful for school board members. School leaders are facing policy fatigue now more than ever. And adding another requirement to our already crowded priorities without actually offering any benefit to our students' achievement or learning recovery is not what we need right now. This bill is an important step in strengthening charter school governance and I'm excited to see it move forward. With the right detailed focus, this bill can help ensure charter schools run better and bring higher achievement levels to our students. Thank you again for your leadership on this issue. And unfortunately, I'm unable to, to stay for questions today, but I'm certain my colleagues can answer anything you have to say. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Yocum. Uh, Laura Maestas, I think is not here. Uh, Justin Lessig? Justin Lessig?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman Mendelson and other members of the council. My name is Justin Lessig. I'm the Executive Director at Sojourner Truth Public Charter School. Truth is the district's first and only public Montessori, middle and high school. We're located in Ward Five. We currently have 290 students across grade six through 11, and we're excited to have our first graduating class of 12th graders next school year. I appreciate the opportunity to provide testimony on the Board of Trustees Training Amendment Act of 2025. The service of our board members at Sojourner Truth PCS is vital to our school's success and to me personally as the executive director. Truth's board has 11 voting members and full board meetings are held every one to two months. Most members are also participating in at least one of our board committees, such as our finance committee, academic achievement committee, governance committee and development committee. Each of those meet at least once monthly. We work hard to ensure diversity of voices, perspectives and areas of expertise across our members. And Truth's board includes three parents of current students. Um, and four, if you include myself, because as executive director, I have an ex officio and a non-voting seat on the board. Uh, board members are regularly reminded of the significant legal and fiduciary responsibilities that each holds due to their position. We seek for all members to feel as directly connected to the school as possible. And many are inside of our building and interacting with staff and students on a monthly basis for walkthroughs and committee meetings. All of our voting board members are volunteers and multiple hours per month of work in support of Truth is expected. For those on the finance committee, for example, this includes meeting directly with our finance analysts on a monthly basis to review how our actual month-to-month budget compares to that, which was approved by the board at our annual meeting the prior fiscal year. When differences occur, the committee asks key questions such as why our staffing expenses may be higher than anticipated or why we may be paying more or less than anticipated in contracted instruction for our students with disabilities. If trends and differences were to continue, this team would get even more deeply involved by potentially requiring things like approval from me for staffing hires or, or even adjustments to contractor agreements. The same committee also meets directly with our financial auditors to get third-party expert review of our financial systems and controls and debriefs to determine what adjustments should be made to our systems and protocols. The Academic Achievement Development and Governance Committee each have similar ongoing routines and responsibilities for their respective lanes. Being a board member is a major responsibility and well-structured training is critical. My hope would be that any training would make those volunteer positions easier for community members and not necessarily harder. Even for extremely intelligent, quick-learning individuals, it can be difficult to learn about the details of key financial metrics and the ways in which our finances are assessed by the Public Charter School Board. It can be tough to keep each of the various academic accountability frameworks such as Aspire and OSI's DC School Report Card straight and to understand the business rules of how the median growth percentile for a student group is different from the growth to proficiency metric. It's incredibly important that all members, regardless of committee participation or a specific area of expertise, also have a strong understanding of the Open Meetings Act and DC's Robert's Rules of Order. At Truth, we do have an onboarding manual that our governance committee reviews with new members for training purposes. But I still believe the Board of Trustees Training and Amendment Act of 2025 is a very important one, and I advocate for strengthening the bill. Particularly, I think the bill could benefit from an increased focus on training board members in governance-related competencies and academic accountability systems rather than the general classroom instruction and academic programs. I believe the Public Charter School Board should have flexibility to contract with organizations with nonprofit governance expertise to develop the trainings so that they can identify partners with expertise in each specific training topic. Volunteer board members are typically very busy people, and so training could, should be hopefully efficient, concise and flexible to accommodate busy schedules. Current board members and new board members should receive a comprehensive initial training and then streamlined annual refresher training in order to avoid redundancies in information and skill development. I hope that asynchronous online training modules could be considered here to make competition, or completion flexible and timely. As a school leader, I've seen a lot of success in new initiatives and bills when leaders are engaged for collaboration. And I hope that board chairs and other board leadership will continue to be consulted with in the development of high-quality training programs. Thank you for your time and consideration. I truly appreciate the opportunity to share ideas.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Lessig. Emily Hedin?
Good afternoon, Chairman Mendelson and members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. My name is Emily Hedin and I'm the Executive Director of Breakthrough Montessori Public Charter School in Ward Four. At Breakthrough Montessori, we are deeply grateful for the contributions of our board members. In the seven years that I have served as executive director, I have found our. In the seven years that I have served as executive director, I have found our trustees to be valued advisors, stewards, and thought partners. Most recently, our Board of Trustees has spearheaded our school's strategic planning process. They played an active role in our school's accreditation process, and they are currently preparing for Breakthrough's 10-year charter review. They take very seriously their responsibility to understand charter board governance and compliance and requirements. Our board recognizes and values ongoing training and professional development. Our school has developed our own onboarding process, and in addition to that, our trustees take time to identify other appropriate learning opportunities. A commitment from PCSB and OSI to provide no-cost standardized training would allow our trustees to get access to the essential knowledge they need without placing the burden of finding, organizing, and financing this training on the trustees or our school's leaders. I would like to reiterate comments that many other school leaders have shared, that training should focus on governance and school accountability. Specifically, charter board members should be well-versed in the Aspire framework. They should understand how school performance is evaluated by our authorizer, and they should have coaching on how to engage constructively on conversations of student outcome data amongst themselves and with the school's leaders. We also support the inclusion of financial training, particularly how to interpret PCSB's financial analysis report, and how to look at monthly or quarterly financial reports from the school's finance team as an indicator of immediate and long-term financial well-being. Finally, I would like to add my voice to the chorus of voices calling for differentiated training, which would mean a robust onboarding for new trustees, but more concise refreshers for returning trustees that could focus, for example, on relevant changes to legislation or updates to charter board compliance requirements that they should be aware of. So thank you so much for your time and for your commitment to strengthening public charter school governance in the district. We appreciate the opportunity to testify on this topic.
Thank you, Ms. Hedden. Natika Talani.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, chairman and council members, for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Natika Talani, and I serve on the Board of Trustees for Capital City Public Charter School. I've been a board member since 2017 and previously served as the board chair. Capital City is located in Ward Four and serves more than 1,000 students in pre-K through 12th grades. Its student body is diverse and high need, with 81% of students qualifying for the free and reduced meals program. When I joined Capital City's board in 2017, I was driven to serve and give back to my local community. Most of my work has been focused on supporting education projects overseas through USAID. I wanted to give back to a school that represented my values and was in my community. As a new board member, I was introduced to Education Board Partners, then called Charter Board Partners, and participated in their extensive board training. Capital City graciously covered the costs for me to participate, and this experience was invaluable in helping me understand how charter school boards operate and how to understand and navigate our fiduciary and oversight roles. Since I've been on the board, I have seen Capital City further improve its own onboarding and training for trustees to ensure that trustees are fully vetted and able to carry out their oversight responsibilities, which I'll speak about momentarily. I, as a trustee for Capital City, support the Board of Trustees Training Amendment Act overall, so I believe it's crucial for board members to be fully prepared for this important role overseeing our charter schools. At the same time, I believe the act could be improved to provide even stronger support for trustees. First, it would be more valuable for trustees to receive training on governance-related competencies and academic accountability systems rather than classroom instruction. Each year, Capital City trustees are required to attend at least one afternoon's worth of classroom observations, which provides significant insight into instructional practices at the school. However, the accountability systems, such as the D.C. Report Card and Aspire, are where our input is most valuable and where we can provide the most oversight. Training on these systems would help improve our understanding of the school's improvement plans and ensure that leadership is focused on the right things. Luckily, I can say Capital City has done a thorough job of training its board on these systems, but the expectation that all boards receive this seems critical to add to this act. Second, I ask that there be some flexibility in how the training is provided. As a mom of a toddler and someone with a full-time job, I need flexibility in how training is offered so I can participate fully. I encourage you to revise the OCS language to ensure that asynchronous online training modules can be considered in this program development. Third, I encourage the legislation to clarify that the PCSB must consult with school leaders during the development of its training program. I've learned so much from the two school leaders at Capital City during my time, and their expertise would be invaluable to the onboarding process for board members across the city. Thank you for bringing this issue to the council and seeking to strengthen our charter schools.
Thank you, Ms. Talani. Thank you, each of you, for your testimony. I had just a couple of questions. A couple of you testified that training should be online as well as in person. I'm a little skeptical of online training. I wanted to probe that a little bit more. Doesn't online training lend itself to some folks who maybe are not participating as thoroughly as they should with training?
I think a good example of that that works is when you want to, this is not the perfect example, but when you want to get certified to dive, there is an online element, and it actually checks your, like, your knowledge every, like, five or six, that you're actually paying attention. So there's a check for knowledge, and you kind of work through it, and then obviously when you should, it's really critical stuff if you're learning how to dive, and so you're incentivized, obviously, to go through it, but you have to have a certain, like, 90% or higher mastery, like, to kind of keep moving through, and so you have to repeat sections if you're not paying attention. So I think there probably is a way to set up online training to ensure that folks are actually attending to it and responding to, like, checks for knowledge every now and then.
Any other comments? Any other comments on this?
This is Natika online. If it's okay to jump in, I'll just say that there have been a variety of online trainings I've attended. There are adult instructional sort of groups who are able to design curricula that make sure that you're engaged. You can travel with a cohort through an online sort of series of modules or courses. That was one of the most beneficial aspects of attending the Governance Academy sponsored by Education Board Partners, but there are absolutely ways to be able to sort of recreate that in a virtual environment, which may even enable greater access from a broader, more diverse array of trustees, given everyone's really busy sort of work schedules and sometimes locations across the district. Thank you.
Well, I totally get the flexibility that some people may have difficulty participating in person, but it's also my experience that online enables folks to not participate as rigorously. That's being diplomatic.
Yeah. This is Rochelle Kimboko. I would love to double-click on what Nikita just said. I'm in a number of fellowship experiences or have experienced a number of fellowships where we have significant pre-work that we have to do independently that is asynchronous, right? We're doing that work independently, and then we are gathering for a facilitated conversation, sometimes in person, sometimes virtually, and I think that that's what, you know, that could facilitate or be a way of ensuring, to your point, that people aren't just kind of snoozing through a set of slides or a presentation. You know, that is a pretty, I think, most of us professionally are used to doing some kinds of professional development in that way, and I do think the cohort thing is helpful as well, perhaps as a motivation for people to be comparing, you know, comparing and contrasting their experiences as board members. It certainly could enrich a board member's experience, especially a new board member, if they have someone who's not on their board to check in with and say, "This thing is happening on my board," or "I'm not sure how to ask for something that I want or need." You know, knowing someone else who has served on a board or is serving on a different board could give you some perspective as well on whether you're getting what you need from your school's leaders and in your service.
Anyone else on this? Yes, Mr. Glover.
Yes, I would say, I think that there's a reasonable argument that it's easier to be distracted when you're sitting in front of your computer than when you're sitting in person. And I would certainly advocate for both options because there's another risk, which is that potentially good board members who don't have the ability to be flexible enough to show up in person during the day, let's say, would just opt out of board service. I would also say, you know, we put a lot of faith in online training for things like mandated reporter training, which we ask all of our employees to go through on an annual basis, because in part, it would be incredibly difficult, especially with people coming in mid-year, et cetera, to do those trainings in person and to do them as effectively. And then lastly, I would just say, I think we would advocate for ongoing training to be largely led by individual LEAs with their boards, right? And so those would be predominantly in person, as boards meet in person, and they would be very contextual, right? It would be less about, do you understand, let's say, the Aspire framework, and more about, do you understand how the Aspire framework applies to these specific school situations that you're responsible for? And I think those would be opportunities to hold board trainings in person.
So I'm going to, my next question is for you, Mr. Glover. You seem to push back on the idea of refresher training. Did I misunderstand?
I think that we have a shared vested interest in making sure that there's strong baseline training for all new and existing charter school board members. I also believe that, that just like with good teaching, we expect good teachers to differentiate instruction, that individual boards on an ongoing basis are going to need different things, and some are going to need more intensive supports and resources than others, and that if the legislation, if the legislation doesn't allow for that level of differentiation, then we're not going to get to everyone what they actually need to govern thriving organizations and to be strong boards. I also think that a lot of the ongoing training is contextual, so having something that is broad in the sense that it applies to all schools on an ongoing basis beyond, let's say, changes in the law, changes in policy, which I think everyone should get, but that the ongoing training really should be more specific to the individual LEA and the governance needs of that LEA. And I think that's a hard thing to legislate in a way that is contextual.
I'm not sure I followed all of that. One of the thoughts that's going through my mind is that I think everybody who's testifying today are folks who have taken seriously the responsibilities of boards and the responsibilities of being a member of a board. It's sort of like there's a built-in bias to who's testifying, and our challenge is the boards that aren't so well-understanding of their role or responsibility.
But all boards, and again, I don't want to mess up Carlo's last name, like, the PCSB has Carlo and others who visit boards and see how they operate, right? Carlo sat in on one of our meetings a few months ago, watched how we operated, you know, and watched how we worked, and we all submit minutes and things to the PCSB, and so like, somebody, if we're submitting them, I hope someone's reading them, and someone might say, "Hey, this is the third set of board minutes," but they've done no board education, period, and we need to flag that. Like, there are existing systems in place that can be leveraged, that can help improve board education, and I agree with John, a lot of what board education involves should be, can there be some global, hey, here are the board members' roles, like, general broader trainings that are put by everybody sure, but there's context of running each individual school. A lot of it academically is similar, but then there are different contexts. His school may have bonds, my school may have no debt, like, everybody has different financial situations, but I just think there are things we already submit and have that can be leveraged and used better to help inform what is needed, I think, and then I think there's, so it's just, it's a balance, just like it might be a balance of in-person and online, right, or in-person and asynchronous.
You know, with all due respect, I just was not convincing. Now, why do I say that? First of all, how many charter LEAs are there? 68? So if I had to read 68 board minutes every month, I think I would go crazy. Plus, I'm not sure what I would see.
Well, I mean, I would suspect that whoever's hired to collect those minutes and review them would be trained in that work and should have an idea, like, is there academic discussion? Is there financial discussion? Is there operational discussion? Is there board education or improvement? Like, I mean, again, maybe it's far-fetched, but if we're not submitting minutes for them to be reviewed, why are we submitting them?
Well, that may be a fair question, although it is evidence of at least the board's meeting. But I'm thinking of with Eagle Academy, and I want to be careful how I say this because I don't mean to cast dispersions on anyone, but I think they kind of missed that the school was on a bad trajectory. And then when it came to the very end, I think they didn't really think through how their sudden, their abrupt decision to turn in their charter would have very disruptive consequences across the charter sector. That's not something you're going to capture in minutes, and I'm not sure you're going to capture that, see that if you visit a board meeting.
There are, there is evidence to suggest that the public charter school board is taking additional steps to evaluate the effectiveness of charter school board governance post-Eagle. And I guess the question is, if, and we do, if we believe that they can, as they do for our finances, assess the effectiveness of our practices and the effectiveness of our financial reality, can they also assess the effectiveness of our governance practices and the health of our governing bodies? And my answer to that would be yes. You may be skeptical of that.
Am I looking skeptical?
You look a little, yeah.
Yeah, I'm feeling very skeptical.
But I think that there is an ability for them to say, "Okay, we believe you are an entity that would benefit from additional ongoing training," and maybe even to say, "In these specific areas based on what we are seeing," versus an organization, and so those organizations, those boards get additional resources, additional supports, additional trainings, either by recommendation or potentially by conditions on a renewal, that you need to undergo these trainings to make sure that governance is operating effectively. But if you, if you give a blanket solution, the boards who need the most training are going to get something less than they need, and the boards that really need the more, you know, they're doing well and their ongoing training with their CEO, with others they bring in is enough, they're probably going to get more of, more than they need from a generalized, you know, basic practices of a board perspective.
Well, that's a fair point. I was looking skeptical because you made the comment about the financials. Financials are sort of black and white. You look at the balance sheet, or you look at the quarterly reports, things add up, they don't add up. What we're talking about here with board training is quality, and that's not something you read on a page. I'm thinking of the minutes, but I'm not sure that's quite the same point. But quality is not something you read on a page. That's why I'm a little skeptical about the virtual, because how do you assure quality if you're not actually interacting with the person who's getting the training? All right, I think I've pushed back enough here for the moment. Anything else any of you want to say before I excuse you?
This is not really related, but I want to remind you the grand opening is next Thursday, and we do hope you can make it. Thank you.
You know, I thought that might come up. I think I have two or three other commitments that evening, but I will take another look. Thank you. You all are excused. Thank you. Continuing with the list, Barry Caldwell, Vice Chair, Board Member, KIP DC Public Charter Schools, Valerie Jablow, Sharn Boone-Ruffin, I think it's Quamise Harris, Jessica Giles, Jessica Giles, and Suzanne Wells. Mr. Caldwell, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon to you and to any of your colleagues that are on remotely. My name is Barry Caldwell. I'm a Ward Three resident, and while I, while I'm testifying in my individual capacity, I do serve on the board of KIP DC Public Schools. I do serve on the board of KIP DC Public Schools and Washington Latin Public Charter Schools. Those two schools together educate and support over eight thousand Washington DC students. I'm testing, testifying largely because I believe the bill at hand has the potential to really strengthen the important ways of governance of our charter schools. But at the outset, I just want to acknowledge the dedicated service of all the board members in the district, across the district, who are generously devoting, volunteering their time, their treasure, their expertise, and their passion to our public schools, our public charter schools. They, we, we really are the core to the governance and the oversight and the success of these schools. And we bear significant legal and fiduciary responsibilities in that regard. Indeed, it's this engagement, I would submit, that coupled with effective governance, that is essential for the continued success and sustainability of our charter schools and ensuring that all students attending them receive a high-quality education. And, Mr. Chairman, I do believe that well, a well-designed and effectively delivered training can augment onboarding programs that charter boards have for new members, as well as be continuing education for sitting board members, all together promising to enhance significantly effective governance. So with that in mind, I really have two, maybe three, depending on the time, recommendations on ways, for your consideration, on ways to strengthen the bill. Some you really have heard previously. And I'll offer just the highlights. There's a couple of, a few more details in my written testimony, and maybe one other recommendation. First, please target academic accountability as a governance imperative. Academic accountability is the bedrock of the charter school agreement. Therefore, the training mandated by this bill must prioritize, prioritize academic accountability, clearly specifying it as a core governance function. And while I appreciate the comments by, or the observation by Mrs. Anderson earlier, I think that the language that I've seen around instruction and academic programming is something less than academic accountability. Second, you've heard it previously, please ensure that the training is flexible, relevant, high-quality, and accessible. In this regard, just a couple of things. While the Public Charter School Board should develop its expertise to offer training programs in charter school board governance, LEAs also ought to have the opportunity to seek this in alternative ways, including contracting with third-party providers that are expert in providing charter governance, or developing their own programming that meet the standards and the requirements that the regulator may adopt. I appreciate, Mr. Chairman, your skepticism around online asynchronous, but I have to implore you, please adopt it. I think there are ways to address the concern of the question that you raised about that as well, that this legislation should allow asynchronous online training to accommodate really the busy schedules of, of parents, community members, professionals that are volunteering their time and their duty. And I guess the last point I would make is this collaboration with school leaders will be key. They have practical knowledge here that will be helpful in developing this. I'm not saying that their word is dispositive, but the collaboration with our, our school leaders will be key. With that, I thank you, and I'm happy to try to answer any of your questions.
Which I may have, again, when I'll come back to you.
Sure.
However, I don't have a copy of your statement. So if you could resubmit it? Thank you. And also, you said you were testifying as an individual, not as, on behalf of either the boards that you're on.
That's correct.
Valerie Jablow?
Hi, I'm Valerie Jablow, a DC education analyst. The bill that is the subject of this hearing to provide training to board members at DC charter schools came about in the wake of the rather dramatic collapse of Eagle Academy, which included the equally dramatic step of its board to close the school a week before the start of the school year. It is tempting to believe that better board training would have prevented that, or at least minimized the damage. Unfortunately, that is not the case, and this legislation doesn't prevent it from happening again. That is because this legislation would not prevent a head of school from keeping important fiscal matters away from its board, not representing fiscal matters directly to the board, and/or repeatedly misrepresenting this to the council and charter board without any check by either body. That is what happened with Eagle. This legislation also does nothing about ensuring the charter board doesn't ignore important fiscal information. This happened with Eagle, as well as with WMST. Both schools closed precipitously as a result. And this legislation is silent on the needed but unheralded and untracked communication between charter board staff and board members of individual charter schools. The charter board has not made entirely clear to whom at each LEA it relays fiscal and other concerns, board members, school leaders, or both. What little I know of this suggests that not all DC charter school boards are operating with equivalent information. Ironically, one of the jurisdictions requiring affirmation of board members' duties, Nevada, was the same jurisdiction where Eagle had recently opened a school. That school, too, failed with the same CEO with many similar problems. But unlike DC, Nevada regulators cracked down on fiscal anomalies immediately and very publicly. Given all of this, it behooves this body to not just ensure training of charter board members of very basic accountability, but to ensure that the people we are actually paying for oversight are serving the public first, not nonprofits. As I testified before you earlier this month, almost twenty percent of our charters are now on the charter board's fiscal monitoring list, while there is still limited public accessibility to all the ongoing real-time fiscal analyses the charter board uses to evaluate the fiscal health of our charters. Moreover, the charter board's executive director was not entirely forthcoming in how she addressed the chairman's queries about that during the March 5th performance oversight hearing. She referenced the fact that financial analysis reports, FARs, and a multitude of other financial data are available on the charter board's website, without noting that nearly all of it, including FARs, is based on data a year or more old and does not contain the charter board's ongoing real-time fiscal analyses, some of which are not easily or sometimes at all available to the public. These include early warning notices, notices of fiscal concern, out-of-compliance notices, citations of fiscal concerns, schools not meeting fiscal targets and/or floors, schools with odd key financial indicators, and FCAPs, Financial Corrective Action Plans. Finally, I want to underscore that Eagle's abrupt closure by its board was well within that board's role. In fact, this can and has happened at DC charter schools. Please understand that none of this is to say, don't train board members of charter schools. It is merely to underscore that such training is never a guarantee by itself of accountability and should not be the only measure of such taken by this body in the wake of Eagle. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jablow. Sean Boone Ruffin?
Good afternoon, Chairman Mendelson and members of the committee of the hall. My name is Sean Boone Ruffin. I'm a Ward III resident, a former Eagle Academy parent, and former Eagle Academy Board of Trustees. Both of my daughters attended Eagle Academy. My oldest completed pre-K 3 through 3rd grade, now in sophomore, graduating early from Dunbar Senior High School. My youngest attended from 2022 until closure in 2024. I joined the Board of Trustees in November of 2023 while my daughter, my youngest daughter was in pre-K 4. I served on the board for nine months prior to the closure and my resignation from the trustee. I am here to advocate for the passage of Bill 26-62, the Board of Trustees Training Amendment Act of 2025. I am highly supportive of this bill because it will prevent members of the board from being uninformed or misinformed about their duties and responsibilities. Ensuring the board is properly trained can allow board members to pinpoint areas of mismanagement and identify issues before they become serious. This can prevent situations like what happened with Eagle Academy. In my own experience as a member of the Board of Trustees, we receive very little training, and the training that we did receive primarily focused on policies of opening meetings act. As a parent, I naturally bring expertise based on my lived experience, and I am empowered with training of governance, fiscal management, responsibility under the federal district laws and regulations, and more. This would have strengthened my ability to contribute as a board member. I appreciate that this bill requires the training occurring annually. Excuse me, this will help keep board members up to date with any and all changes that may occur throughout the school year. Yes, it is not, it is not a lot, but it is enough for the training to come to the board members that do not know. I urge Aussie and the Public Charter Board members to ensure that these trainers provide board members with a deep understanding of their responsibility, paying particular attention to fiscal responsibilities and governance. These trainers should break down the various topics in the way that is easily understood by those without a background in education. It would be helpful if these trainers include examples of what a successful board looks like and how it typically governs, and the destruction, and what it should look like. Based on my experience, I learned the importance of checks and balance and having distinction between CFOs and CEOs. These are the two things that I hope would be included in the training to support board members' governance and the knowledge of power. We must equip the board members with the knowledge that they need successfully to run the board. What happened to the closure of Eagle was unfortunate and cannot happen again. We must ensure that the board members have the information they need. I hope we take this opportunity to learn from the mistakes that were made from Eagle Academy and pass the Board of Trustees Amendment Act of 2025. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. I look forward to any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Boone Ruffin. I believe Quamise Harris is not here.
I'm here, I'm online.
Please proceed.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman and council members, for allowing me to speak with you today. My name is Quamise Harris, and I'm a parent trustee at Capital City Public Charter School. I have been a board member since 2019, and I currently serve as the vice chair. My son graduated from Capital City in 2023, and I have three children who are currently enrolled at the school. I joined Capital City's board because I witnessed the positive impact the school had on my son's life. He had incredible opportunities while attending Capital City and discovered his passion for the environment and the outdoors. I firmly believe in the potential of a Capital City education, and I want all students to have an equally enriching experience. When I became a board member, I participated in a three-hour training session with the head of school at that time and the Director of Development. I also received training from Education Board Partners, now known as Bellwether, and I have continued to attend their in-person board training to stay updated on expectations and requirements for charter school boards. These training opportunities have been invaluable in preparing me for my oversight and fiduciary responsibilities, and I, they have helped me feel confident in my role as vice chair. The training our board has received from the school and other organizations has strengthened our oversight capabilities and deepened our commitment to this work. We meet regularly in committees and as a whole because we genuinely care about Capital City and its community. I fully support the Board of Trustees Training Amendment Act and would like to share some recommendations to strengthen this legislation. And the vital, it is vital that the Public Charter School Board has the flexibility to contract with organizations that possess expertise in nonprofit governance to develop this training. Having multiple training providers is crucial so that the Public Charter School Board can access expert guidance on specific topics and ensure a smooth and timely implementation. Our board of thirteen members has diverse schedules, availability, and levels of experience, and I can only imagine the challenges faced by the seven hundred-plus board members across the city. I would also like to see the act include comprehensive initial training to, for both current and new board members, as well as an annual refreshers as needed. It is important that training opportunities are tailored to how adults learn, especially considering that trustees must fulfill and uphold their oversight responsibilities. These additional changes, along with those recommended by my fellow trustee, Natika Tolaney, would greatly enhance the oversight and support the charter schools require. Thank you for addressing this issue before council and your efforts to strengthen our charter schools. I welcome any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. One question I have is, I don't have a copy of your statement, if you could provide that?
Of course.
And did you say that the training that you do, refresher training you do with Bellwether is in-person?
It is in-person.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Jessica Giles, is she here?
Good afternoon. Greetings, Chairman Mendelson, council members, and staff. My name is Jessica Giles. I'm a resident of Ward VII, and I'm testifying as the executive director of the DC Chapter of Education Reform, now advocacy, a nonprofit organization advocating for a just and equitable public education system for all DC students. I am also on the Board of Trustees of a public charter school here in DC. We must ensure that all public schools are held to the highest standards of excellence, so I am pleased to testify in support of B26-0062. Public charter school board members play an essential role in ensuring the academic, financial, and operational health of their schools. A board that is engaged, informed, and well-structured is best positioned to uphold the commitments outlined in a school's charter and ensure that all students receive a high-quality education. An effective board starts with selecting the right members, individuals who bring the necessary expertise and a deep commitment to the school's mission. As board members cycle off, it is quick, it is critical to quickly replace the women members who are committed to strengthening governance and oversight. Given that board members have diverse backgrounds and areas of expertise, it is imperative that they are trained in governance and board operations, financial oversight, academic performance and accountability, school operations and risk management, CEO partnership and leadership development, as well as legal compliance with federal DC laws, the policies of the Public Charter School Board, and the charter contract at their schools. Serving on a public charter school board requires significant time, dedication, and a commitment to continuous learning. Board members must be knowledgeable about the academic, financial, and organizational history of their schools, of their school or schools, responsibilities, and actions they should take when certain situations occur. They also must be proactive in studying strategic goals and ensuring that the school they oversee remain focused on student success. This work is demanding, requires a deep sense of responsibility, yet it is important to note that board members serve as volunteers. Any legislation that the DC council moves forward should give board members the flexibility to take advantage of high-quality and relevant trainings at any time and to avoid creating barriers that might discourage dedicated and capable leaders from stepping up to serve. So onboarding is really important, as was mentioned today. Flexibility is also important, so mixed module, webinars, having a dashboard, tools that anyone can, can access to answer commonly asked questions, become really important tools as well. So thank you for this bill. Thank you for holding this hearing and happy to support. I'm grateful for your time and consideration. I welcome any questions you may ask.
Thank you, Ms. Giles.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to testify at today's hearing on the Board of Trustees Training Amendment Act of 2025. This act was introduced in response to the abrupt closure of Eagle Academy in August 2024. I want to be clear that I fully support training for members of a Board of Trustees of a public charter school, but I do not support the Board of Trustees Training Amendment Act of 2025. I was disappointed when this act was introduced, that this has been the only response, apart from the hearing held on December 5th, 2024, that we've seen from the council in the wake of Eagle Academy's closure. While training for board members is important, isn't this something the Public Charter School Board should have been doing since the first charter school was approved in DC over twenty-five years ago? I assume many individual charter schools already provide training for their board members. Can't the Public Charter School Board make a commitment to learn from the best trainings currently being offered to board members and develop comprehensive training for board members that can be shared with all charter school operators? Does the Public Charter School Board really need legislation for them to do this? On a personal note, I am a substitute teacher for DCPS. I was recently required to complete about five hours of online training. Professional organizations routinely offer training to their employees without having to have legislation requiring them to offer the training. I'm concerned this legislation gives the appearance of transferring fiduciary responsibilities from the paid CEO, CFO, and auditors of a public charter school to non-paid volunteer board members. The people who are being paid have a far greater responsibility for the financial health of a charter school than a volunteer board does, in my opinion. In the case of Eagle Academy, it also isn't clear how board members would have been able to exercise their fiduciary responsibilities when the CEO/CFO and auditing firm hid important fiscal matters from the board. No amount of training is going to help when a board isn't fully informed. It seems that there is much more urgent business the council should be paying attention to surrounding Eagle Academy closure. Shouldn't there be more public information about the finances of Eagle Academy? For example, what is still owed to auditors, details in the four million UPSFF funding the school received in July 2024, and whether any of this funding will be returned to the city, and a thorough investigation into the CEO, CFOs, and the auditing firm's financial management of the school? I urge the council to investigate what appear to be serious issues of financial mismanagement at Eagle Academy. And I urge the Public Charter School Board to fulfill its responsibilities to monitor the finances of the public charter schools and ensure public charter school employees and board members have appropriate training to successfully manage the school's finances. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wells. Uh, thank you, Ms. Wells. So I'm in a pushback mood here. Um, Mr. Caldwell. So you really like virtual, and again, we don't have a copy of your statement. That's not horrible. What, oh, we do now.
I'll, I'll be happy to provide it again.
No, we do now. Um, you, you stressed in response to my questioning other witnesses that really ought, virtual ought to be allowed. So this is gonna sound horrible the way I ask it, but why are you here in person? Hmm, because the personal interaction is a little bit better.
I, I think there's several people in the, in the space that have asked me to consider talking about this issue. I serve on these charter school boards. I serve on several other nonprofits and a, a corporation board as well. And a lot of these issues blend in together, so I suppose it's because of my experience. But I think this is an important piece of legislation if you were going to do it.
Why are you testifying? I mean, why are you testifying in person?
Because it was really easy for me to get down here from my house and spend time, uh, because this is an important, uh, issue. But if you were correlating my appearance here to any training I might do in person or online.
Yeah, it was.
I, I'm merely suggesting that that be an option, that you really get the flexibility in the training. I hark back to my corporate, uh, days when there's lots of training that is done online, um, for compliance purposes. Take the Foreign Corrupt Practices Act. Annually, uh, we might have training around that. There are questions that are asked. There are different questions every year. There's answers that, uh, that you have to provide. You get a certification, uh, that you actually took it. That goes off to, at the time I was chief legal officer, it would come to me. I, I knew that that was happening. Same thing on any, uh, any, um, sexual harassment training and the like. Similarly, you can do the same in this space on this.
I totally get that.
Okay.
But I do think quality is an issue here. So, I mean, I, I just, what's going through my mind is that, um, when the, before the pandemic, there were efforts from time to time from council members to change our rules to allow, um, members to participate in absentia. And no, we said, no, you have to be in person. And when the pandemic hit, well, nobody was gonna be in person, so we allowed virtual. And at this point, our council meetings are all what I call a hybrid.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so members can participate, uh, virtually or they can participate in person. And I find it fascinating that at every meeting, virtually every meeting, um, almost all, if not every council member participates in person. Why? No, I don't expect you to answer that question, but why? Because there's a whole lot more
Absolutely.
quality and richer, uh, environment around in-person participation. You're able to sit here and maybe chat with somebody else you know from the charter sector, maybe even from one of your, the boards you're on, maybe not. Um, uh, probably there's better folk, greater focus by your being here in person, you're listening to the testimony. Um, I mean, I'm making the case for why in person is just much richer and fuller and more robust. I think the best argument for virtual is, um, accessibility, because we want everybody to get the training, but we also want quality.
Mr. Chairman, completely agree with you. Post-pandemic board meetings that have been held remotely, I think we lose something when we are not in the room and there's a, a challenging issue and we're not reading body language, we're not able to talk to one another directly in the room. Um, that's evolving, that's getting better, uh, so I completely agree. But I think the point here is because of the demands that volunteers, parents, professionals, community members have, uh, asynchronous, uh, online learning should be an option, should be an, uh, opportunity for them to do that.
Well, I'm glad you mentioned that, because that actually reminded me of the second argument that I had. So the mayor nominates folks for council confirmation. And, uh, when they are folks who are for boards or commissions under the, the committee of the whole's purview, I usually try to have a hearing, and at every hearing I ask the nominee, "Do you have the time to serve?" Now, they all say, they always say yes, um, but at least they're on record saying that yes, they have the time. The point here is that it's important that somebody who wants to be on a board has the time to serve. If they don't have the time to go to the training, I'm wondering whether they have the time to go to the board meetings.
I think training is part and parcel of the board's service. I think we have an obligation to be as smart as we possibly can within the confines, confines and the time pressures that we have, um, to appreciate the issues that, um, uh, our schools are going through. I joined when we had the three-tier, uh, uh, system. Uh, we're going to aspire. That's brand new. We are obligated, um, as board members to provide our best advice and counsel to management to understand what that is about, and it goes to the core of accountability, uh, academic accountability. So, you know, it may be tough, but it may be more demands on our individual time. But I think you are not gonna lose very many people who are dedicated, really passionate about, uh, kids being successful in the charter school system. They will find the time if they don't think they have it. So I, I don't necessarily personally, uh, uh, buy the argument that it's gonna dissuade some, maybe a few, but I think that will be a distinct minority.
I think I'll leave it at that and turn to other witnesses. Thank you. Um, Ms. Dablow, I was a little confused by your testimony. This legislation would not prevent a head of school from keeping important fiscal matters away from its board? Uh, or not representing fiscal matters directly to the board and/or repeatedly misrepresenting this to the board? What legislation would?
I don't know how to do this. I'm simply saying that this legislation will not do that. The reality is, is that Eagle was challenged in different directions. And one of the challenges of Eagle was the behavior of its leader and not just how the leader was, was interacting with the board or not. Um, it's, its leader was not given good oversight by pretty much anyone in the District of Columbia, despite many people for many years pointing out problems that leaders in the District of Columbia should have taken notice of. And maybe they did, but it's
You're criticizing this bill for not preventing a head of school from keeping important information away from the board or for misrepresenting. Uh, I would actually argue that with, um, board training, board members would see flags and would understand that they have the ability to demand information and answers.
They can, but that doesn't mean that they will. It's hard to demand something that you don't know exists and that you just are guessing at. And if a person is determined that you aren't gonna know about it, there is no FOIA law for D.C. charters, and that person can sit on that information. So you may be a very diligent and trained board member and may suspect something exists, and if the leader says no, then you're on your own. You are literally on your own.
Uh, yeah, I'm not sure I completely agree with that, but I asked the question. Um, and, uh, Ms. Wells, you, you said you're opposed to this legislation, but I didn't understand why. You suggested that there were better priorities, but that's not the same as testifying opposing this legislation. Why you oppose it?
I, I don't think that we have to legislate for, you, uh, an organization to provide training. I, you know, eh, it's, I, DCPS, I don't think there's any legislation that requires substitute teachers to take training so that they can do their job. So I, I just, I feel like this is unnecessary legislation. While I totally support training, and I think the public charter school board should have been doing that from day one, I, I just don't think it's something that needs to be legislated. And as I said, I think there's more important issues to respond to the Eagle Academy closing than to introduce this legislation.
Well, it's an interesting observation because, uh, training is evidently not occurring in all the schools. So on the one hand, you're saying it's not necessary, this legislation, because it could be done. But on the other hand, uh, it hasn't been done, and, um,
Well, I would ask the public charter school board why they haven't done it.
Well, we did. We did it at the hearing last December.
And
Um, but I think there are also, I'm a little bit on, uh, a limb here, because I haven't looked at the statute recently, but I'm not sure how clear it is that the charter school board has the authority to, has a hammer to hit, um, schools over the head for training. I might be wrong on that, but it's not happening. And, uh, so, but that leads to another observation, which is you're critical of this legislation and then say that we should be paying more attention to what's already happened. I think there is, are some investigations going on, but shouldn't we be spending more time looking at how to prevent, in other words, proactive?
I would say, looking at these, if, I'm not aware of what investigations you're doing. They have not been made public, but I would certainly say, look at the results of those investigations and see what changes need to be made.
Um, okay, well, we had a hearing last December, and one of the outcomes of that was an agreement that there ought to be training and that it ought to be required. I mean, I'm looking at your statement here. One of the questions you want is details on the $4 million that the school received. I think it's pretty clear what happened to the $4 million.
Uh, no, it was, we got this, you know, vague, $1 million went here, $1 million went there, $1 million went there, and $1 million's being held by a bank. Is any of that gonna be returned to the city?
Hmm, maybe the $1 million held by the bank, but otherwise, no.
Well, big, you know, just $1 million, $1 million, $1 million isn't very detailed.
All right, I think the record's a little bit more complete than that with regard to the $4 million.
I don't think it is. I was at that hearing. That's all that was said.
All right, I think I'll leave it at that. Um, I should know better than to push back at witnesses. Thank you each of you for your testimony.
I don't feel you were pushing back. You were asking questions.
Okay, thank you. I do appreciate your testimony. And I do also appreciate, and I mean this sincerely, your activism with regard to public education. So you all are excused. Thank you. We're gonna turn now to the government witnesses. Dr. Michelle Walker Davis, Executive Director, D.C. Public Charter School Board, and Dr. Antoinette Mitchell, Acting State Superintendent, Office of the State Superintendent of Education. Give me just a second. Uh, when you're ready, who wants to go first?
I will go first, Chairman.
Okay. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chairman Mendelson, members of the Committee of the Whole and staff. My name is Antoinette Mitchell, and I am the Acting State Superintendent of Education for the Office of the State Superintendent of Education. I am pleased to provide testimony on Bill 26-62, the Board of Trustees Training Amendment Act of 2025. This bill requires the public charter school board to provide training in coordination with Ossi to newly elected or appointed public charter school board members on instruction in academic programs, personnel, fiscal management, operations, governance responsibilities under federal and district law and regulation, and any changes to federal and district law and regulation. Ossi shares council's interest in ensuring that all public charter school board members have the necessary and proper knowledge to succeed in their roles, and we support moving this legislation forward. Charter public schools provide education to 48% of students in the District of Columbia. Each of D.C.'s 68 public charter LEAs plays an important role in meeting the needs of the district's students and supporting our community's diverse educational ecosystem. At, as Ossi's leader, I am committed to ensuring that every child in D.C. has the opportunity to receive an excellent education at a high-quality public school, DCPS, or charter. A school's charter board plays an extremely important role in oversight of the school. As we engage in this conversation about how to ensure that local charter board members receive appropriate support, it is important to first recognize that charter LEAs are by design and definition structured differently than a traditional school district. Under the D.C. School Reform Act of 1995, one of the nation's first and strongest charter school laws, a charter school in D.C. must be formed as a nonprofit corporation and its board of trustees governed by the entity's corporate bylaws. A school's charter is the contract with the authorizing entity and sets forth the school's mission, academic program, design of the school, and financial plan for operations, among other things. The National Council of Nonprofits defines it this way. "Board members are the fiduciaries who steer the organization towards a sustainable future." And the National Council of Nonprofits says that the board members do this by adopting legal governance and financial management policies that are sound and ethical and by making sure the nonprofit has adequate resources to advance its mission. Therefore, those who volunteer to serve as board members or trustees for a charter LEA in our jurisdiction assume a large responsibility. And as such, these volunteer board members should receive training aligned with that responsibility. Specifically, every board member should receive adequate training on charter board governance and accountability, financial management, and laws pertaining to charter board membership. While many board members already receive robust training, there is value in ensuring that as a system, we establish clear guidelines as to what types of training are critical to effectively fulfill the responsibilities of a charter board trustee. There are a number of areas within these categories where Ossi and PCSB have shared interests. For example, it is important that board members receive training on the elements of financial compliance that Ossi oversees, in addition to robust training on sound fiscal management policies and procedures within the purview, purview of PCSB's authority. Also, it is critical that board members know there are required compliance reports that could jeopardize the school's funding if they are not completed accurately or in a timely manner. At the same time, it is important for charter school board members to have a solid understanding of the role the D.C. State Report Card plays in state accountability. As the council considers this legislation, we recommend a few friendly amendments. First, nonprofit governance and management is not a state education agency function. Therefore, we recommend adding the phrase "as needed" or "as appropriate" directly following the Office of the State Superintendent on line 36. Second, Ossi encourages council to replace instruction in academic programs with the term "state and authorizer accountability framework". with the term "state and authorizer accountability frameworks" in line 40. Instruction and academics are incredibly broad topics and primarily the domain of administrators, principals, instructional coaches, and teachers. Board members can and should learn what academic and other inputs influence charter schools' accountability scores, since boards of trustees are responsible for meeting the goals that set forth, set forth in the charter agreements. The text should be more narrowly tailored to this need. Third, we believe it is the intent of council and in the interest of strong charter governance for all charter board members to receive these important trainings. Therefore, we recommend clarifying that these trainings should be for both new and currently appointed or elected board members. Along the same vein, it is, it will be important for PCSB to designate which trainings are required upon taking the role of a charter trustee and setting the appropriate cadence for additional and renewal trainings. OSI is pleased to continue to work with council to refine the Board of Trustees and Training Amendment Act of 2025, and we look forward to its passage. I welcome the opportunity to answer any questions you may have for me on this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell, Dr. Walker Davis.
Good afternoon, Chairman Mendelson and members of the Committee of the Whole. I am Dr. Michelle Walker Davis, the Executive Director of the D.C. Public Charter School Board. Thank you for the opportunity to testify at today's hearing on the Board of Trustees Training Amendment Act. The School Reform Act empowers DCPCS B to approve the opening of new schools, monitor each school against the goals in its charter, and close schools that do not meet those same goals. We are also charged with monitoring each school's financial health to ensure its financial viability. In August of last year, the school year began with unexpected challenges for the students, families, and staff affected by the sudden closure of Eagle Academy due to financial difficulties. We understand the disruption this caused and recognize the resilience of everyone navigating this transition. In December, I testified at a hearing on the closing of Eagle Academy. What I shared then is what I believe now, that schools operate better when they have a board of trustees that is trained, knowledgeable, and has access to information. The governance structure of public charter schools is what sets them apart from traditional schools. The ability to attend a school with a distinctive curriculum and instructional model is what motivates nearly half the families in D.C. to send their students to public charter schools. However, this individuality also raises questions and concerns from families and the broader public. With so many different public charter schools available, how can I have confidence in the management of my school? That confidence was indeed tested last August. Shortly after Eagle's abrupt closing by its board of trustees, we worked diligently to help place students and staff in new schools. Since then, DCPCS B has addressed several concerns regarding our financial oversight policies. The first step in rebuilding and fortifying public confidence was providing greater transparency by educating the public on our approach to financial oversight, holding monthly discussions on financial oversight at our board meetings, and publishing more information like the Financial Monitoring List and citations of fiscal concern on the School Finance page and Transparency Hub on our website. Each school's fiduciary responsibility ultimately rests with its board of trustee members. Our goal is to provide the public and school's board of trustees with additional authorizer insight into the financial, as well as academic, stability of their schools. DCPCS B's role is to monitor the big picture of school finances with an eye toward long-term viability, while each LEA board provides the strategic direction, governance, and financial oversight of the school with input from the school's leadership team. A key reason DCPCS B provides this information to the public is to share a neutral and objective perspective on the performance of schools. In turn, the board of trustees can provide effective governance of their school's progress toward meeting academic, financial, and compliance goals. In the wake of Eagle Academy's closure, it is understandable for families to be concerned and for this council to want to take action. DCPCS B is prepared to provide training to each LEA board, increasing families' confidence that their child's school will be there from the first day of class until the next step in their academic journey. I wish to highlight for those same families the resources already available on our website, dcpcsb.org, through the Transparency Hub. Each public charter school also has a profile published on our website. In our Transparency Hub, families can learn more about our academic accountability system, Aspire. In addition to providing academic oversight information, our website's Transparency Hub provides the public with a substantial amount of financial oversight documentation. As I mentioned before, we have moved our Financial Monitoring List to a more prominent place on our website. On that page, we list the school, reasons for inclusion, and whether the school is on a Financial Corrective Action Plan, often referred to as an FCAP. In addition, the Transparency Hub also includes school budgets, audited financial statements, tax returns, financial analysis reports, also known as FAR, and at-risk funding expenditure plans. These documents help to provide a comprehensive picture of a public charter school. We strive for dcpcsb.org to be a resource for the public. However, we understand if families are more inclined to visit the website of their child's school instead. For this reason, we adopted a new public information policy prior to the start of the current school year. Beginning July 1, public charter school websites will be required to include pertinent information related to their school and keep that information up to date. This information includes the school's academic calendar, its student-family policies, such as discipline and attendance, a centralized hub for open meetings and board of trustees information, and its employees' policies, to name a few. The public information policy will ensure students, families, school leaders, and school board of trustees are on the same page with school policies. The Board of Trustee Training Amendment Act would require DCPCS B to train board members on a variety of topics. These topics include academic programs, personnel, fiscal management, operations, governance, and knowledge of federal and D.C. laws and regulations. Many of these topics have policy and resource pages on our website, and we've begun sending key documents directly to the entire school board instead of relying solely on school staff and the board chair. I agree with the council's desire to institute mandatory training for Public Charter School Board of Trustees members. Trustee members need the resources and knowledge to think critically about their schools. Through this effort, I believe we can help ensure stability for the district's public charter school sector. To create a comprehensive training program, we are meeting with LEA board members and working with local and national experts to craft the best program possible. In fact, we've already met with four other model authorizers to learn more about their governance oversight work, and we look forward to continued conversations with experts to better, under, better our understanding of board training practices. As this bill moves through the legislative process, I ask you to consider how we can thoughtfully build a board of trustee member training series. This consideration should take into account the needs of the 700-plus board members that serve on the boards of 68 public charter LEAs in the district. As you know, the members of the board of trustees are volunteers. The majority are district residents, while a small portion are students attending the school they serve, they serve, for which they serve on the board. Many have impressive and taxing jobs in both the public and private sectors, and many juggle those roles in addition to being parents themselves. These volunteers can only devote a few hours to the endeavor of governing a school. In addition, because there are so many vacant positions to fill sector-wide, schools report that recruitment can sometimes be a challenge. We want to make sure we are enhancing the board of trustee member experience and not adding additional burden. This legislation calls for board assessment training 90 days after the board of trustee member is elected, and annual training for all members. While we strive to be creative, this timeline may be logistically challenging, given the amount of annual turnover on each board of trustees. We would like to see this number closer to 182 days or six months to ensure these volunteers can find the time to be trained. Additionally, the requirement for annual training may be a bit taxing on volunteers. Typically, board of trustee members run an average of three years per, uh, their terms run an average of three years per their bylaws. As the content will likely remain unchanged, it might make sense to require bi-annual training after the initial onboarding. We would also like to see changes to the types of training offered. LEA board of trustees absolutely need to be trained on financial oversight, academic oversight, legal requirements, and governance. It is in the areas of operation and personnel that we believe more clarity is needed. For example, a board of trustees does not have any real oversight into the operations that is handled at the school staff level. Regarding personnel, if this means hiring and evaluating the school leader or creating personal, personnel policies, it could be relevant. However, if it means something broader, then that would be more of a school-level discussion. So these are some areas that we would like some further clarity on. There are also areas that fall squarely within the exclusive controls afforded to schools under the School Reform Act. So we ask that those particular lines are clarified or struck from the bill. Thank you, Chairman Mendelson, and the rest of the council for the support of accountability in our public charter schools, and I am happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Dr. Walker Davis, that last point, the 42 schools, I don't see that in the statement we got.
I'm sorry, what, the last point about?
The last point, which was about, I think you said 42 schools? The very last point you made is.
I, I made this, the last point that I made was about the personnel. Is that what you're referring to?
Maybe I made that up, but you said something that I think was beyond what was in your written statement.
I don't think I did. I was making, the, the last point that I was making was about the reference to personnel in the training, in the list of training. And if that reference is regarding the primary hire that boards make, which is for the executive director, then I think that there is opportunity to lay that out in training. I think if it is about, um, sort of teacher, other staff, personnel, those are usually at the management level with the school's CEO. And so that might not be appropriate for LEA board members. I don't recall making a reference to 42.
I'm, maybe I was in a different reality. Okay, that's possible. Uh, all right, so I do have some questions. I think I'll start with this. So you were present the, um, with the non-government witnesses. The last group, couple, couple of them questioned why we're doing this. So I'm going to ask this question, why can't the Public Charter School Board just require training and provide training without this bill?
Thank you, Chairman, for that question. We can. Um, and actually, we have been preparing for the ways that we are going to enhance our governance oversight. So I think at the December hearing, I shared that we've added capacity on our team with the governance specialists. You may have heard some reference to that specialist already attending board meetings, and we've done outreach.
Is this the guy who is reading 68 minutes every month?
Um, he is reading board minutes, board minutes. Uh, we do receive those board minutes on a cadence, and so it is not every month that he's reading 68 board minutes. But we do review, review board minutes. We do require that they are submitted to us in our compliance calendar. And we have a whole bunch of other things that we require in terms of board governance oversight. But we have been reflecting on the ways that we can enhance our capacity and our oversight of governance of the boards. So if the question is, is the legislation necessary to make that possible? No, it is not necessary. And we are still supportive of the leg, the direction of the legislation. We'd like an opportunity to shape that for what makes sense. Um, and also have a conversation about if there are expectations for what you want PCSB to do. One, we'd like to have a role, obviously, in designing that. But what hasn't been mentioned today is what are the costs associated, depending on the scope of what the expectations are.
And what are the costs?
It depends on the scope of the expectations of what both the council and others are requiring. A good number of our LEAs are doing training right now. But I think once we determine what is a requirement for every LEA, what are things that are augmented and supplemented, I think we'd have to decide what are the costs associated with that.
Um, you'd like an opportunity to help shape the legislation. Is that more than what you have in your written statement?
Well, what I have in my written statement is sharing our current perspective. We, I named in my testimony.
Near the end, some changes.
Yes, so those changes, but I believe that that doesn't actually design, it doesn't design the training. We would be designing the training in consultation with OSI and others, and meeting with LEAs, looking at best practice from other authorizers, looking at our local and national experts. So I think the legislation itself is saying that we will have training. It's not actually designing the training. We would have to do that.
Sure, you don't want us to design.
Absolutely not.
Okay, but you said you'd like an opportunity to help shape the legislation. And is that more than what you have in your written statement?
My, uh, what I assume would happen is that you would listen to all of the testimony today, including ours, and we would have further conversation about what ultimately lands in the bill. So yes, we've laid out where we see areas for change. I would hope that we would have ongoing conversations about what ultimately lands in the legislation.
So you could do this, the Public Charter School Board could require training without this bill. So then, why in the last 30 years hasn't it? No, before you answer that, does every, it, does every charter LEA provide training to its board?
It is our understanding that LEAs do provide training to their.
Everyone, 100%.
We are not currently assessing the types of training that LEAs provide to their boards. What we are assessing is, are you having board meetings? Uh, we look at the minutes for that. We look at the composition of your board. So to your point, the point that you were making earlier, there is nothing in the School Reform Act that says we are required to provide training. If you're asking if we need legislation to provide training, we do not need that. If there is a specific expectation that the council has for the types of training and the cadence and pace of that, then yes, you would have to demand that.
You're going to make me dizzy here. I think we saw with the Eagle Academy that there was not adequate training required of boards. That's why we are talking about this. You don't disagree.
Correct.
And so I'm not really, this is not meant to be a gotcha question. It's really meant to get at why we need this legislation. So if you have the ability to do, require the training, why has the board not done that in 30 years?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I think your point that you were making earlier about the statute, the statute is not clear on what we can do about it if a board chooses not to do the training that we require. Right? So we have a process that says we have to review schools, and we can close a school if they don't meet their goals, and there is statute that lays out that. We can say you are required to attend training. We do not have that same level of authority around training. So that is where there is some benefit to having the legislation, because it gives us authority that is not currently spelled out in the School Reform Act.
Dr. Mitchell, so OSI is supportive of this legislation. But how would you answer the question from those witnesses who said, we don't need, we don't need to require this because it can happen anyway?
Well, that it hasn't happened anyway would suggest that we need to do something different. And so I think that this legislation would be very helpful in sort of proposing what we do differently. And making the training a requirement would also give us the opportunity to structure uh, the training in a way that ensures that all board members are receiving um, the same base level information about the roles and responsibilities associated with being a member of a board of trustees. And so I would say that it is important for us to, uh, do something different and to provide this training in a way that is consistent across all, all of the charter LEAs.
Well, Dr. Mitchell, in your statement. Well, Dr. Mitchell, in your statement, you had a few friendly amendments. The last one ended by referencing setting the appropriate cadence for additional and renewal training. So that says to me that you believe refresher training would be useful.
I do, I do. I think that things change. I think the training should likely be annual, though I would defer to the charter school board. But I think that things change. I think that having the opportunity to be reminded of one's responsibility is important. I don't think that the renewal training needs to be as extensive as the initial training, but I do believe there are benefits to being reminded of one's roles and responsibilities.
So, and you agree, Dr. Walker Davis?
Yes, I agree that we should have a more robust sort of onboarding training and then a less robust refresher. I do depart from the testimony earlier in that I do think biannual might make more sense logistically than annual, but I think we could also determine if there are different types of training that might be more on an annual cadence versus the more robust training.
So let me go to some other questions. Have either of you or your agencies looked at how other states are approaching board training requirements?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I can start. I mentioned four model authorizers that we looked at in my testimony. So we had conversations with and engagement around Central Michigan. So they do six hours of initial training with a three-hour board development training per year, and that's a combination of in-person and virtual options. We also engaged Colorado. They have orientation modules, and then that's followed by quarterly trainings that are required during the first two years of an LEA's operation. Indianapolis, they share resources with the board members, but they do not, they have no required trainings. And then SUNY in New York, they have board trainings by request from the LEA, but they don't have any general training requirements. We've had conversations with them about the board training process, kind of what does the scope of work look like? How would it be similar or different if we were to try to apply it there? But those were four of the model authorizers. And again, these are folks that were flagged for us from our National Association of Charter School Authorizers, NACA, which is a national organization of people who do this type of work.
Dr. Mitchell?
Yes, we have done some preliminary work in this area. We've identified five states, Florida, Nevada, New Jersey, Washington, and Tennessee. And as was testified earlier, there is a gamut of ways that states are requiring board training. In Florida, there's a requirement of training that is approved by the Board of Education. In Nevada, the training is on governance and roles and responsibilities. In Tennessee, the training is annual, and it defers details to their state Board of Education. So we're finding that states differ greatly in what is offered and how it's offered.
So neither of you are pointing to one jurisdiction and saying, ah, this is the model. This is what we need to follow?
I think there are pieces that we can learn from both these model places that I named as well as what the superintendent named. I think what is important is the context that we're operating here in D.C. And so I think it's more important for us to think about what is the type of information that our LEA boards need, and then we can learn about the cadence that other places provide training, the way that they provide training, and think about if that would work here in our community. But I think what is most important is what is the context of our charter law and what do LEAs in D.C. need to know about their roles as trustee members.
Let me ask timing. The legislation would have governance training beginning with the '26, '27 school year. Is that adequate, sufficient?
I think that is possible, yes.
I agree.
Which might explain why neither of you testified about it. Dr. Walker Davis, you recommend allowing 182 days for onboarding training? That seems like an awful long period of time, six months of maybe six meetings before they get training?
Thank you, Chairman. Within the first six months of a board member joining is what we recommend. Some of our board members have bi-monthly, every other month, board meetings. So it wouldn't necessarily mean that they've missed six meetings. But I think it's important that they are having an opportunity to get the robust, you know, D.C. charter 101 type of training as well as what is unique to their school. And so we want to just provide the maximum amount of time, and we think within the first six months is appropriate.
Do you give training to your board members?
We do, yes, we do.
And how quickly do you do that?
It's sometimes within the first six months as well, because there is a lot that they have to cover in terms of the responsibilities as a D.C. board member. So we take time for them to do academics, for them to do finances, and it usually takes about six months for them to get through all of it.
Through all of it, but when does it start?
We do an initial training within the first month of a board member coming on board, and we do try to time it so that they have the appropriate information prior to sitting at their first board meeting. Like, as you know, Chairman, our board members are also volunteer board members. So we do want to make sure that it is, there's enough flexibility that they can get the information that they need to take, the action that they need to take as board members.
Sure, but I think that's kind of interesting because the question isn't, I don't think, is completing the training, but rather, when does it start? And it sounds like you waste no time with your own. I'll keep moving. Compliance. What should be done for schools that failed to complete the required training?
I can speak to what we do currently, or what powers, so to speak, that we have currently. So we do have a board governance, compliance, policy, and we have also our data and document submission. So right now, we are not requiring training, but when a school does not meet those requirements, they are subject to early warning notices. They may be subject to notices of concern. These things get flagged in their compliance report. And so similar, we would rely on those kinds of strategies if folks do not participate in the training, and it would escalate similar to ways that we escalate other violations of our existing policies.
Dr. Mitchell?
I would say that compliance is an area that would be best addressed by the charter school board. I don't think that OSI should play a role in that particular area.
So the bill says we want to see training, go do training. I kind of pointed my finger on purpose. So what additional information and resources would you need to develop an effective training program? I think what I'm really asking is, are there any changes to the bill that we would need to make to help you with regard to additional, whatever you need to develop effective training program?
Thanks for the question, Chairman. I think having a bill that is flexible enough that will allow us to build an appropriate training is what's important. I think that's why you saw in the testimony, I asked for clarification around the personnel. I asked for us to think about the timing. But I think if those areas are addressed, we would have what we need to be able to build that. Again, if there are specific expectations of the council around the scope of the training, I do think that a conversation around the cost associated with that would be important. So currently, I did talk about the staff that we have dedicated to governance. That is one FTE in addition to the folks who are part of our organization. But if we are planning, if we are required to do in-person training for 700 board members at some frequency every year, if we are required to contract with other folks to provide the training, I do think we need to have a conversation around the cost of a more robust training program than what exists right now.
The old fiscal impact.
Yes.
The two of you look very happy. Thank you. I have no further questions for you at this time. I'll thank you each of you for your testimony. That's going to wind down this hearing. I want to thank all the witnesses, prior witnesses, and remind folks that the record in this matter will close at 5:00 p.m. on Wednesday, April 9. Because I got some grief about this at an earlier hearing today. It doesn't mean that nobody can talk to us about the legislation ever again, but we have to file a record for this hearing, and that record will close at 5:00 p.m. on Wednesday, April 9.